Our council work session at 5:44 PM. And before we start, I want to ask the council if you've reviewed the agenda and items on consent. You have any comments there? Okay. Any counselor concerns? I'm going to wait a little minute. Sorry, I started a little early. I said 5:45, sorry. So just to check through, sorry, Counselor Dunwell, I started a minute early. Do you have any item comments on the agenda or items on consent?
I do not.
Any counselor concerns? Okay. Then we'll start with our pre-council work session with our SMART annual rider survey results.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, members of the council. My name is Dwight Burschere. I am the transit director for SMART and Fleet. And this is that time of year, once a year, we come before the council and share our rider survey. This one was conducted in 2023. I'm joined here by Ann McCracken, and Ann will be leading tonight's presentation. And so I will let Ann introduce herself. But we're excited to share some of our findings in light of some of the recent comments that were made regarding SMART. I think it's quite timely. And so we'll share with you exactly what our customers are saying about our service. So, Ann?
Thank you, Dwight. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of the council. I just wanted to give a brief summary of what riders were saying about our service. This was conducted last fall, actually in October of last year. So we contracted with a Summit Employment Agency to go onboard each trip that we operate weekday and Saturday, and to gather surveys and take in the completed surveys. This year, we, in addition to the hard copy surveys that people would fill out, we did it by online, which I think made it much easier for folks because some folks are only onboard for a few minutes. And and we did have several people that completed the survey after their trip, which was great that they went to the effort to do that. So we collected about 116 surveys. And this is a drop from our earlier surveys prior to COVID. And one of the reasons why we only collected 116 versus, say, 400, 450 prior to 2020 is a drop in ridership. We haven't quite come back up to pre-COVID ridership levels. So one thing that I thought was interesting is when we compare our findings to fiscal, or excuse me, the survey done in 2019, there were really no big changes. And so I wanted to go over a few key responses and also mention that next year we will be doing a demographic survey. So we alternate. So every other year would be the rider demographic. And then, and after next year, we'll do another rider satisfaction survey. So our overall rating was 4.5 out of 5 this year. And so when we break that down into folks that indicate, you know, if this exceeds their expectations or meets their expectations, we dropped a bit compared to 2019. So in 2023, 38% said that we exceeded their expectations, whereas in 2019, 52% said that gave the same response. As far as meeting expectations, they were about the same comparing the two years. And another thing that remained the same was when we asked, would you recommend SMART to family and friends?
Could you step back?
Sure.
So you spoke to the 38, go back to the prior slide. The 56%, what was the number in 2019?
2019 was 47 versus 56%.
And then the same with the 5% on the did not meet. What was 20 comparative?
It was a little over 1% in that were, it did not meet their expectations. Whereas in 2023, it was 5%. And also take in mind that this was a much smaller group of folks that we were surveying.
Sample size for your survey size for 2023 was?
166.
And then at 400 and?
Sorry, go back to my notes. It was 166 completed surveys in 2023. 2019 was 397.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And please let me know if you have any more detailed questions. I brought some reference material, but I'd be happy to follow up too.
Yeah, I would love to see that comparative is where, you know, as you're going through it to, so you can, we can have a deeper lens into what those percentages are.
Excellent. Okay. So as far as bus stop amenities in 2023, we got 4.5 out of 5 possible. And the way that the survey instrument was done was it was just a series of stars that people could complete. And so when you look at that, the way that it broke down, 64% said they were completely satisfied with bus stop amenities. In 2019, bus stop amenities was 4.3 out of 5. So we did go up on our bus stop amenities. Cleanliness of bus stops was about the same, 4.6 out of 5 compared to 2019. And then cleanliness of inside the bus and comfort of bus and safety on bus remained about the same compared to 2019. So we were rating pretty high on all of these aspects of bus stops and the vehicles. Another element that we were asking folks about was our service and how we were providing information for them. And and also how reliable was the bus? So in 2023, we received, excuse me, 4.3 out of 5 on bus reliability, meaning is it on time? And bus reliability, operator conduct, clarity of information from SMART, and accuracy of bus information remained about the same compared to 2019.
So reliability remained about the same?
Yes.
So 4.3?
Yes. And as you can see, operator conduct, we continued to score very high in that, 4.8 out of 5. And clarity of information was 4.3 out of 5. And in 2019, we scored about the same, 4.3 out of 5. And accuracy of information was about the same, 4.3 out of 5 for 2023 and 2019. So overall, our strengths were our drivers and our vehicles and our stops and how we maintain our vehicles, the cleanliness and so on. And then areas that we need to work on continue to be the clarity and accuracy of information from SMART. And that could be how people are obtaining schedule information or route changes. And then also on-time performance.
Sure. So you were just speaking to how they obtain information. And it seems like earlier we've had a presentation where there were going to be like real time little computers or iPad Kindle type things at the bus stops. Did that happen? You want to handle that?
Oh, sure. Yes. These are paper readers, e-readers, we call them. Yes, they are installed at, I believe, 15 bus stops throughout the, throughout the system. And then we have a larger one at the transit center, about 32 inches. The other ones are about 13 inches, but they are, they have and are accurate and been active for some time now, almost a year, I think.
So probably active in 2023, but not 2022?
They were active in 2023, probably later '22, but they weren't active in '19.
Yeah. So I was kind of wondering about the survey with the stars. Was there also opportunity for people to write in comments? Did anybody make a comment about these readers?
And I would be happy to provide, it's a very long list. That's why I didn't include it in there. But I'd be happy to provide that. What would it be, send it to Kim or what's the process of?
The summaries, I mean, just right now, I was just curious if people mentioned the readers. Because to me, that sounds like a really neat idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I'm glad you brought that up, Counselor, because I think sometimes some of the most significant learnings do come out of the comments. And, you know, are they happy with the readers? Are there trouble areas that you're seeing where more complaints are coming in? Or to the contrary, are there areas where you're seeing some real accolades coming across in some of the comments? And really kind of drawing those out. So Dwight, I do have a question for you. What do you believe is your greatest learning from this survey versus the 2019 survey?
Well, to be honest with you, and and I've worked in cities across this country, the numbers that you're seeing here, you don't see anywhere else. And so I think our customers, rightfully so, have become spoiled with the level of service that we provide. And I think this is reflective. So when I see numbers like 4.3 that in any other city, just a city, you know, to the north of us, Trimed would would be promoting these numbers. I'm thinking that we have room for improvement there. The 4.8 on our drivers, I think, is off the charts. I think that's great.
How much is that fare when you ride?
The fare?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is because I'm really, I'm curious about the the surveys. And are you seeing responses coming in from, you know, both, both sides of the demographics? Your youngest and some of your oldest. Because I drove by Meridian Creek Middle School last week, I think it was.
Oh, yes.
There were a lot of happy kids getting on and off those buses. And it, what a great service that we're providing to those students. And I would not want to be the driver on some of those buses because it looked like a pretty, pretty excited group to be out of school at the end of the day. But it was, it was nice to see that we provide that service to those students at no cost.
Right. Yeah. And what we do there, you know, speaking of Meridian Middle School, is we have the primary bus and we send a secondary bus out and a supervisor. Because it kind of takes, it's, you know, making sure that everybody feels comfortable. That's our goal. And so every day, five days a week, that's what you will see, the primary bus, secondary bus, because there's that many students. And then a supervisor to kind of make sure that everything goes smoothly. And the principal at the, at the middle school is, has been very involved in helping us make sure that everything goes smoothly. So.
So one other thing that's changed or that was descriptive, I think, of the period between, the difference between 2019 and 2023. Yes, we had COVID. We had all kinds of people who didn't go to work at all for a long time. I mean, didn't leave their home to go to an office, is what I meant to say. Didn't go to an office. And we had the wildfires and we had the ice storm. And there must be some other things I'm forgetting. It was quite a period. And so as you look at those comments, I think if you could just summarize that with just some observations in a follow-up, that would be great. And and I think these are great scores. And with the trainings and regular staff development that you do, I'm sure they will take all that into account. But there certainly were a lot of changes in all bus routes in the region during those
Yes.
events.
Yeah. And I think, going back to Counselor Dunwell's question, I think the most disappointing thing for me is that we have more technology than most transit agencies, including a Trimed. And I can literally, I can't, but staff can type a message into the computer and have that message repeated on the bus verbally. So we have automated announcements that we can program that let people know where the bus is at any, any point in the route. You are at Town Center Loop East. We can program that into. And so there shouldn't be a problem communicating. Maybe we're over-communicating sometimes. I ride the bus every day. And if there's a message that we're trying to get across to customers, it'll repeat every five minutes or something like that. And if you're on the bus for 20 minutes, you'll hear the same message five times over that period. So four or five times, I should say. And so I have to, we're going to have to kind of drill down into a lot of this to try to figure out what we can do better. Because the technology is there. We have the technology. It's just how we're using it. So it may, that may be the problem.
I do, I'll have one more comment slash question. And thank you for the presentation because I think it's important. I would like to move to actually the other side and go a little bit beyond the riders. And it looks, based upon these survey responses, it looks like there's, there's high regard for the drivers. Can you speak just very quickly about your, you know, your turnover rate or the tenure of your drivers and, you know, what makes them special? I'd like to get that on the record.
Well, I think, well, I appreciate that very much. I think what makes all of the staff special is, you know, we've created a culture there, a place that we believe is very special called Smartville. And so all of the, all of the folks that work for SMART and Fleet work in Smartville. And so we try to create an atmosphere that is welcoming, open. When you walk into our building, we've painted, if you will, on the, on the wall as you walk in says, welcome to Smartville. And so when we recruit drivers in the advertisements, it talks about a special place called Smartville. And so I wanted them to see Smartville when they first walk in the door. And I think what what we've created is an atmosphere, a culture where people feel valued. We had a training session just Saturday. And and we find out that the drivers feel supported. And I literally, and I wish I would have brought it. I had a note from one of the drivers that thanked, it was directed toward me because I spent some time thanking people, the team, for doing what they do and calling. for doing what they do and calling certain individuals out on specifics where they went beyond the extra mile. And, and this particular driver was writing these notes down and gave the note to me afterwards and thanked you for acknowledging. And the last thing that this note said was, it is there, in speaking specifically about the supervisors, their attitudes and the way they treat us that make us want to come to work every day. And so it's, it, you know, it's, it's not a secret sauce or anything, it's just treating people like they matter, but not just saying it, showing them every day. And I ride the bus and I'm, I'm, I try to be the best passenger that I can be and not cause any trouble.
The rowdy passenger.
Yeah, yeah, I try not to. I try to be helpful and just let them do their job and, but it, it, it's a special place. And we have some incredible, incredible employees. And the drivers, like I said, the 4.8, I, that's off the charts from anywhere I've ever been, so.
It got my attention, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And, and the 4.7 in the area of safety, there is not an agency, I don't believe, in the state of Oregon that is, is talking about safety in those terms at 4.7. What you're hearing is they're trying to pass different laws that make assaulting drivers and things like that, I guess misdemeanor of some sort. And, and when, when I go to these meetings and I meet with Trimed and Chariots and others and they're talking about the numbers of drivers that, that have been assaulted, in the case of Trimed, somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 a year on an annual basis. And I can sit there and I listen, because I've worked in cities that have experienced that, but I can say here, it's, it's not an issue for us at all. And it's partially because there are no fares, so there's nothing to fight over. And then the way that our drivers treat our customers, you wouldn't want to assault somebody that's, that's, that's trying to help you, I mean, going beyond what is necessary, yeah.
I think, you know, just kind of a last little take on that, I think also how you keep it really clean, that the interior of the buses, the bus stops and the exterior, that it makes people feel valued and safe.
Yes, I agree with you. And that was, that is one of my jobs as a, as a passenger, is to take trash with me when I leave. So I pick up stuff that I see that is left behind. It's not a whole lot of it, but I carry stuff off with me.
Well, thank you very much.
I am Councilwoman. Yeah. I was just curious, you mentioned perhaps doing a follow-up with some, some additional information. And I would love to, to have that too and have a comparative, because your, the slides have presented some stats which are helpful and helpful for us to have at our fingertips too, right? That kind of help illustrate what's, what's happening with SMART. But if we could have like the 2019 and then 2023, kind of those metrics on, on the comparable questions across, that would be great. Of course, I understand 2019 pre-COVID, 2023, it's a different world. We're going to see adjustment. I'm actually surprised to hear how similar some of these numbers are because we're, we have a different situation, you know? But that leads me to wondering, when is the next time that this survey will be administered? Because I think that will be an interesting point too, because obviously we have some, some amount of a shift, you know, between the 19 collection and the 23 collection. But when's our next one?
So the rider satisfaction will be done again in 2025.
Okay.
And this year, I still can't believe it's 2024.
I know.
But this year in the fall, we'll, we'll do our demographic one.
Okay.
So we'll alternate every, you know, with, between the two.
Yeah. And so then it sounds like, so every two years. So the vacancy of the 2021 was because of the wildfires, the COVID, the, the everything that was happening in the world at that point. Okay, yeah. No, that's helpful to know and I would just love to have those, those metrics for, for each of the questions. Thank you so much.
And keep in mind, we do the community survey, Brian Wright. I mean, that's done every.
Two years as well.
Yeah, that's going to be on the street here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm proud to say that SMART has always done very well there. As a matter of fact, we've finished, since I've been here seven years, we finish as one of the top 10 transit agencies in the country based on that survey. So we're trying to get to number one, you know, but.
You were number one in one category.
Yes, that's true. Yes, yes, yeah. So, and that's based on, you know, the Wilsonville residents do this survey. It's anonymous, as far as I know, and folks, so they like us.
And it's a big pool.
Bigger.
That one, yeah.
Has a confidence interval of 96%.
Exactly, so.
But Council Linville?
Thank you. Mr. Prashir said I sounded like Barry White.
Right on, right on. You do.
I don't know if that's a good thing.
No, he was great.
Yeah, he was a singer, but I'm not right now, for sure. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for putting the numbers in context for us in terms of our, our transit service in comparison to others. That's helpful to know. I think we always, you know, we, we want to improve any of the, any of the numbers that we have, not always recognizing that we're also up there at a different level than most transit services. So thank you for putting that in, in context for us. The one question I had, which I'm actually really looking forward to the data that Council President Akervall asked for, I just want to, is it, am I correct in, in understanding that this is not unduplicated numbers? So in other words, a single or a rider could have participated in this survey multiple times over the course of the collection time?
In theory, yes. However, most people don't want to do it again.
I understand that. But in doing research and I think soon-to-be Dr. Akervall will recognize as well that, yeah, that, that people who have an issue tend to put that kind of energy in.
Yeah.
And so they are sometimes overrepresented in some of the data. So I know there's probably not any way for us to reconcile that, but I think, I think a note in the response that just says, this is, these data are not unduplicated, although we can't define exactly what that number is.
And I want to point out, I, as I said, I ride the bus every day and I was approached by one of the survey takers and after I had a little fun with them, I let them know that I was the director and that, you know, I wasn't going to, to, to take the survey, so I didn't. But they offered me a gift card if I did, so I thought that was kind of neat.
Yeah, and sometimes that's worthwhile if you've, even if you've already completed the survey once.
Right.
So thank you, thank you for your good work and please send along my congratulations to our drivers.
Oh, I will. I thank you and you, you know, with your help, we've built an incredible transit system, so it'll, it'll only get better from here. So thank you for your support. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. So that brings us to our housing, the Housing Our Future Report, an update on another, a pretty large project. Ms. Rybold and Mr. Polly.
Thank you. Give me one moment here to pull up the slides. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and City Councilors. My name is Kim Rybold. I am Senior Planner with the City's Planning Division and I am managing the Housing Our Future Project. Our intent tonight is to provide a brief update on where we are at with the project, recognizing that a bulk of the work that we have is before us as we move forward. So just as a quick refresher, the Housing Our Future Project seeks to build on the city's recent housing planning efforts to assess what actions we need to take as a city over the next 20 years to ensure that we're continuing to provide housing opportunities for our community. And so really, this project consists of two primary work products, one being the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, which is a technical document assessing the city's available land inventory for future housing and looking at if we have enough land to meet anticipated demand in the next 20 years. The second work product is the Housing Production Strategy. This is a strategy document that will establish a set of strategies based on input we see from the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis and other work that we will do during this project to address unmet housing needs. So really, this project is seeking to answer questions that are listed on this slide and in doing so, will continue to provide the city with a roadmap for future housing-related planning activities. So just a quick look at where we're at right now, we're in Phase 3, which actually makes it sound like we're far into the project. But what's interesting is I feel like as we kickstart Phase 3, that the work is really just beginning in depth. We are working with a consultant firm, ECO Northwest, on this project. We've split it into these three phases to align with grant funding that is available to us from the state's Department of Land Conservation and Development. And so based on those funding cycles, which are based on state budget bienniums, we now have the capacity to begin work with our consultant firm on Phase 3. And so last August, we held a work session with you to give you an update on the first phase of the project, which is a lot of the initial background technical work that we got started on. We shared some initial results of that work at that time and I just want to let you all know that that work will be wrapped up as part of this beginning of Phase 3 and that our consultant team will be sharing a more in-depth report on the results of that work at a work session with you this summer. But since then, we did a little bit of work in Phase 2 to bridge the gap between the grant funding that we had with the consultant firm from the state to do some initial public engagement activities for the project. And so really, Phase 2 included a housing survey that was on Let's Talk Wilsonville, an engagement activity at the city's Party in the Park last August, as well as a community conversation on rent burden that was held in November. And so I just want to share a few takeaways that I felt like I saw from this initial engagement. The first interesting, maybe not so interesting fact is that of the survey respondents we had, only 15% of those survey respondents thought that housing in Wilsonville would be affordable to future generations in the next 10 years and beyond. That's important because that really looks at the timeframe in which we are evaluating strategies for future housing need. Others who took the survey either said that they didn't think it would be affordable in that 10-year timeframe or they weren't quite sure. And so really, that highlights some concerns about the next generation of residents in the city and that they might be priced out. Also, participants in all of the outreach activities saw opportunities to support the creation of housing through investment in needed infrastructure that supports housing development as, and they also expressed support for strategies that would provide more affordable homeownership opportunities as well as additional rental, affordable rental opportunities in the city. So the results of this initial outreach were summarized in your packet. These are some of the inputs that will help inform our work on the Housing Production Strategy. However, the bulk of this project work is going to be starting in Phase 3 and that includes finalizing the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, as I noted, and development of the Housing Production Strategy. We plan to have several additional opportunities for input and events around this work, particularly feedback opportunities on Let's Talk Wilsonville, as well as additional meetings with the Planning Commission and the City Council on this topic to help really shape this document. We will also be doing some more targeted outreach to get input from communities and individuals who might not normally necessarily attend a public meeting or respond to a survey. And so we're looking at doing interviews and other conversations with community members to help inform our work about housing needs. So a key piece of informing the housing strategies will be establishment of a project advisory committee or PAC to, you know, really assemble a group of people who are involved in housing development, both on the market rate side and affordable side, as well as other agency partners and nonprofit partners that are serving the community. And this is similar to an approach that we took during development of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan back in 2019. We expect that this group will meet five times throughout the course of this phase of the project. And really, the role of this group is to provide recommendations on policies and actions for consideration by the Planning Commission that will be partaking in this project and then recommendations to you all as you think about the strategies that you want to move forward with in the Housing Production Strategy. So we would like to invite a member of the City Council to participate on this committee, helping to develop these recommendations, but then also serving as a resource to share updates with the City Council as we have work sessions throughout the project. So as I noted, up to five meetings throughout the course of the project, we anticipate the first meeting to be held in mid-May or so, that's what we're targeting. And really, the meetings will be scheduled based on milestones we have for this third phase of the work. So with that, I, this evening, I'm just seeking your direction on who will participate on that PAC and also am available to answer any questions about the timeline or direction that we have moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, since these meetings start in May, I'd like to hear from the council in this next week. I've heard from a couple of people on their interest and then make a recommendation at our next meeting.
Okay.
And I know we do have some interest and maybe even in a, in a backup capacity. So, Councilors, if you'll send me an email about your interest.
Can I interrupt you just real quick? Do you know when the meetings will be? Are they daytime or evening meetings or weekend?
Yeah, no, so we are not aiming for weekend meetings. We do anticipate that a number of the participants that we will be soliciting might be participating as a part of their work responsibilities. So we don't have a firm commitment to a time and we probably would try to do some polling to see what works best for people. That being said, we had a similar composition for the group for equitable housing and I, we tended to do the meetings kind of a late afternoon, so not quite into the evening, but not first thing in the morning. And so it's flexible, but I would, I would assume we might be looking toward a similar timeframe.
Okay. And while, so other, so we will have that for you at the next meeting.
Great.
And anything else in your report? Because I had some other things I wanted to comment on too.
I do too.
Okay, we have, can't see anything. We do have some people wanting to comment.
I didn't think we were doing that for Walker Work Sessions.
Go ahead, Council President Akervall.
I kind of feel like I'm on Jeopardy. You know? I could ring and buzz in. No. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all of the information in the packet. I felt like that, that was a great packet, kind of breaking down what has happened in this Phase 2 and giving a nice recap. I'm curious if staff, I guess, when I was looking through, I did have some concerns about the turnout or the participation in the outreach. And I wonder if staff shares that concern? I noticed, like for the, the Let's Talk Wilsonville survey, I think that there was 27 responses for that, which felt really low for Wilsonville. I mean, we know how to do, you know, responses and so that felt really low. And, and then I'm, I'm remembering that the rent burdened conversation meeting, I think we only had maybe two or three people in addition to our Planning Commission and council members. And so all of that feels quite concerning to me. And I know the. And I know that now in this next phase, there's the PAC meetings and perhaps other outreach and stuff, too. But I'm curious to hear from staff if they share a concern and what the plan is to kind of address some of those things. And also with the PAC, like, to get, not just people that may be attending the PAC meeting as part of their work responsibilities, but to get community members that are also not attending as work responsibilities, but because of their love and care for the city.
Yeah.
If I could add to that before you answer it, just kind of pack onto that. I talked to the city manager about this, too, because I'm looking at all, I asked for a listing of all of the different ways we've advertised these different ways to participate, and the results speak for themselves. And so if you could tell us all the different ways this has been made known to the public, and then what are some different new additional methodologies we can use? That's kind of what I wanted to add to that.
Sure. Those, I think, great questions, and I can start, and then maybe if you want to chime in. So I would say, I think, I don't know if concern would be my first word. I think a little bit of disappointment is one, but I think there's some nuance to that. One is that we've had a lot of housing-related work and projects where we've sought a lot of input over, I'd say, the last four, five years since equitable housing. So, you know, this is probably like the third or fourth housing-related survey that we've posted, and, you know, not to say that there might be housing, you know, you answer one survey, and it's like, oh, they're the same questions. How do you ask questions in different ways and try to do things creatively? So I think there's a piece to that. I think, quite frankly, Let's Talk has a built-in platform of subscribers that we've reached out to and, you know, publicized on social media, publicized at the Party in the Park. That being said, I think we know, based on the demographics, information that we have from that website, that that is not the whole community. And I think that's very clear when you look at some of the demographic information attached to that survey. And, you know, so in terms of publicizing that, it was not something that was mailed out as a postcard to everybody, but it was put in the Boone's Ferry Messenger. But, you know, sometimes that postcard, I know when we did an online survey for the I-5 pedestrian bridge project, you know, that got a lot of traction doing a mailing. That being said, there's cost to the mailing, and I think particularly in Phase Two, where it was city-funded and we weren't taking advantage of DLCD funds, you know, there's a sensitive sensitivity to how much money we had to spend to do that kind of more direct targeted outreach. I think in terms of the survey also, it's probably not the best way to reach everybody, and I think we have an opportunity in Phase Three to more directly target people we want to hear from in ways that aren't necessarily that a survey format. So that is, I think, an opportunity we will look forward to in Phase Three. As for the meeting in November, it's interesting, so this has been a bit of a tricky nut that we had to crack, as the meeting is required under state statute for all communities over a certain size that have at least 25% of their residents identified through census data as severely cost-burdened. And so there's a lot of statutory requirements around who we should be targeting for that meeting. I think we tried to target those entities, but I think there was a question of our mind of who the appropriate audience for that meeting is, given that there are specific directives in the state statute for who we should be inviting to attend. That being said, that's going to be the first meeting of one that we probably have annually, and I think we're going to reflect on, you know, who we heard from. I honestly think we had a great conversation at that meeting, but what we didn't hear from, you know, was a very technical, policy-oriented conversation. And councillor Akervall, to your point, how do you get the community voice into that conversation? And so I think that's something that we will look at as we have to do that meeting again this year. And so the question of participation, and particularly on the PAC, and, you know, something that lends itself to a more technical dialogue, can often be intimidating for people who don't have that background and level of expertise. I think we're still working on who we plan to invite, so, you know, I think any suggestions that you might have, you know, when we come back to the next meeting, we're happy to hear. We have a pretty robust list, I think, trying to lean on some of the community service providers that, you know, can in some ways speak to the needs of their constituents. I hope, we're hoping to get participation that way. And so, you know, I think it's, in terms of the quantity of involvement, you know, it's not super reflective of the broader, larger community. I think we have opportunities in Phase Three, having more grant funding to be able to devote to that, to broaden the reach a bit. And Dan, would you like to add anything?
Sure. Dan Polley, Planning Manager, so a couple of thoughts. First of all, this isn't the first housing survey, as Ms. Reibl said, and this pattern of relatively low response to housing-related topics is something that we've seen before. I recall just kind of, story is similarly launched surveys about parks and rec versus housing. Parks and rec got a lot more. You know, there's all sorts of reasons where that can be, you know, people may have a bit of, just, I don't know what the word is, just don't look positive on government's ability to address the housing issue, where like, you know, the design of a park, they know, okay, this is in the city's wheelhouse, we can have a comment, have an impact. There may be some of that going on, and really viewing the city as more, not necessarily a housing provider, but as, you know, as a parks. So I don't know if there's some of that going on, but it's a pattern we've seen in these sorts of surveys, and we get the same primarily homeowners more than the rental community. We're aware, and we track that tendency closely. And so that's why, as in this Phase Three, we really look to do other targeted outreach to get, to fill those holes that aren't reached by those sorts of mechanisms.
And so, you know, I have this notebook that I seem to keep with me a lot of time, which are the slides that were given at the November workshop. And I would really like to, and I've mentioned them a couple of other times, but, because I really think it would be important and hopeful that more people in our community could, you know, we could get their attention to read this, because it was quite shocking. And also to be able to be in a conversation to learn about what the situation really is. And I hear what you're saying, that it's not the most compelling, it's not, it's not as fun as saying, what's your favorite kind of playground? It's a whole different kind of question. And, you know, some of this, this one slide I have in front of me from 2021 shows that in Wilsonville, between 2014 and 2021, household income increased by 21%. It's probably not too different from a lot of other communities. Rent costs increased by 55%, and housing sales prices increased by 72%. And then, as you know, the consultants went on and shared with us about the housing burden and how we just have a greater percentage of people who are spending a very high percentage of all the dollars they can get. Social Security, it's often older people who are living on a fixed income. And the fact is, the amount of their fixed income that has to be applied to housing continues to go up. And so what is our, you know, I would just really, maybe what we're saying, councillor Akervall and I both attended a meeting of Wilsonville Alliance of Inclusive Communities, or for an inclusive community the other night, and it was a conversation about housing, and it also was a small group. It didn't draw a big crowd. But there was, I think, a general consensus on how valuable it would be for people to come together and just hear about how these situations have developed. And we do have in Wilsonville, I think, some robust solutions to that over time that some other communities have not had. So I'm glad we have the basis that we have, but really, a conversation about that situation, and what are some ways our legislature, our county, the metro region, and our city are going to address it, because it's just not going to go away. And so that's, I guess, maybe what we're saying, is having a handful of people willing to fill out surveys isn't enough. So I think, did you have your hand up?
I did.
So do I, so.
Okay.
Yep. Councillor.
I have the same concern that council president Akervall had. And while I appreciate that the data's outlined, and there are charts and that kind of thing, looking at the numbers, it's difficult for me as a councillor to have a lot of confidence in making any generalizations about what that data really says. And I think the statistics that the mayor was just discussing are really quite relevant. So it would be helpful for me to know what, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, but at some point, if a PAC is put together, what are they going to look at? What is the data? Are we just going to rely on knee-jerk opinions of a group of people who are sitting around the room? Or are they going to take all kinds of pieces and look at all of the picture? Given, you know, and the other piece of data that I keep bringing up again and again and again is that we have the highest percentage of renter occupied residences in the Portland metro area. And so with rent going up and with the housing, I think I made this comment at the, at one of the public meetings that we had, the rent burden meeting. Certainly, understanding what those folks are dealing with, with increasing rents. I think it's one thing when you own a home and you have a mortgage and you know that's built in. And so as a citizen, you know that you're going to pay that same amount again and again and again and again. For homebuyers, we recognize that buying a home is a difficult thing in the city of Wilsonville. But in terms of those people who are burdened, it seems to me that it's our renters that are burdened at this point. So, but our data doesn't show that right now. And so I'm just hoping that as the PAC comes together, that they get to look at all those data as well, and really kind of try and put some sense around what's going on for our community.
Yeah, those are great points and great questions. And I think that the group will have the benefit of finalized or closer to finalized Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, which again, is the technical data side of it, but kind of like impartial, not, you know, a survey response of 27 people. I think we take that data point for what it is. It's 27 people responded to a survey. I, you know, it's not conclusive, it's not indicative, and the summary does acknowledge and note that. So I, I'm starting to get some ideas that even in my head, as I've listened to your input now, I think there's an opportunity, as this more public-facing part moves forward, to even just share some of these statistics that I think to all of us seem a little jarring. They at least do to me. You know, maybe in a future article in the Boone's Ferry Messenger or something like that, where, you know, we know it's getting on people's doorsteps, and they're not having to go track down the website to read that information, so.
I think they're very jarring, and the part that is also important to go with the statistics are the stories of who are the people? How did somebody, you know, get in that position? They worked an XYZ job for X number of years, and here's what they have, and here's what's available. And just learning very, a few examples, I think, is important to go along with statistics. Councillor Dunwell?
Oh, thank you. I do have a few things to say. I agree with both councillor President Akervall and councillor Linville. And I think that, I believe that the data that you shared with us should be heavily discounted. I believe that, I personally believe that we have a twofold responsibility, and one is to understand the need, and including, and when I say "we," I don't mean just council, I mean our citizens and our city overall, to understand the need and the problem for housing, and why it matters. And number two, to educate our citizens on the realities of housing costs. Because you're right, Mayor, that's some pretty jarring data. And it, I don't think it's a narrative, and I think it goes beyond a narrative in the Boone's Ferry Messenger. I think it's actually, you know, almost a piece in and of itself that's showing some of those data, and why it matters. That's the education piece. Because when you look at the fact that our least mobile segment of our population here in Wilsonville are renters, because they can't afford to move. And here's the problem. The problem is, is that those are often individuals who are silent. They are not going to necessarily complete a survey because they're busy working. They're not going to the Party in the Park because they might be busy working, or whatever it may be. And, and this is what, this is where I get really nervous about this, is what you end up with, is you get, end up with a conversation that goes on outside, whether it's in social media or wherever, that's not in my backyard. I don't want, I don't want affordable housing in my backyard, because that's going to impact me. Where the reality is, is if the population understands what the need is and the why, and the fact that those individuals that are living in some of the more affordable housing are folks that are, most of us would go, well, that sounds like a pretty good pay. But the fact of the matter is, housing is expensive around here. So I think that that education piece is a key component that we make, that we must not ignore in this, and that the data must speak for itself.
I just have a little bit of concern. This is a big job, a really big job, and I think it's really important to us. And I'm concerned that a $40,000 DLCD grant to fund it is not enough. And so we end up doing things we can afford doing, instead of maybe doing things that we should be doing. So, and I have a little bit of concern about next year, because it seems like a portion, a larger portion of that money is going to be spent on a consultant, who may be facilitating PAC meetings and writing reports. So I'm not, I don't want to get in the middle of telling you what to do, and certainly not, Dan, I don't want to, I don't want to be directing the project. But I do want to verbalize my concern that, you know, the funding for the project is really at the bottom level.
We do have one more item, and this is great conversation. I'm hearing your concerns that public outreach is essential. So just hearing that is enough for me to say, let's look at the public involvement strategy. What will the grant fund? And if we need to add more money to this for more meaningful public involvement, we can certainly do that. So this is the first bite at the apple. You'll have many bites until we're down to the core. But I think we'll have enough time to bring something back to you and say, this is what the grant provides, this is what we heard from council, we can add more to the budget for the public involvement, so.
So let's talk about that maybe at our next meeting. And I know we do have 30 minutes that we need to cover.
Right.
And less than that, so we're going to have to go over.
May I just briefly clarify something for the record on the $40,000? That's just to cover our time. The money that actually pays for the consultant is directly contracted with the state. We don't even see that. So there is more money in the budget than is reflected.
Well, I think I'm hearing, and I'd like to ask the councillors to follow up with an email to the city manager and me about some of your thoughts, so that we get all of that, and we know what people are wanting.
Any ideas that you have, that you think would get to the demographics that we don't normally hear from? I'm thinking like stakeholder interviews with people that are living in apartments.
Going to people.
I have some ideas we could bring that back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. So councillors, we've got, the email channels are open. Please provide detailed, thorough ideas. And that brings us to our French Prairie Road. And that brings us to our French Prairie Road pathway options. And we, I think we'll just get started with that and take the time that we need while still hitting our timeframe.
Just one second. I'll review this presentation, but I know it's not very long. It's getting shorter by the minute.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and council. My name is Zach Weigle. I'm the city engineer. And here before you tonight about the French Prairie Road pathway options and really here be, at your request, if you remember back in November, November 6th, council received a petition from community members asking to, to repair or upgrade the existing asphalt pathway that runs along the outside of French Prairie, French Prairie Road in Charbonneau. So there, this is a picture of the existing pathway. Tonight, we're just, the staff is looking for some feedback on whether or not we should move forward with a, with a project to identify some alternatives for replacing and extending this pathway. I'll get into a little bit more detail on that. But that's the feedback we're looking for. A little bit of background about the pathway. It's a little bit hard to see on the screen. Hopefully it shows up better on your, on your screen. But the existing pathway is a five foot, five foot wide asphalt sidewalk, kind of runs along the outside of French Prairie Road. You can see it, it's represented by the blue line on the map, starts at Juliet Drive near the west entrance to Charbonneau on Miley Road and runs about a little less than one and a half miles all the way to Country View Lane. The orange line is represent, represents French Prairie Drive itself. It's 2.2 miles long. That's, it's hard to believe that that, when I drive that road, it's that long, but it is a very long section of roadway. There's been a lot of planning work that's done on this to, to look at extension of this pathway and replacement of the pathway over time. You can see all of these documents looked at, different projects to, to either extend or replace the existing pathway. The first, starting off with the 2006 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, that project, that plan really identified the need to extend, fill in that gap along the east side of French Prairie Road with the pathway because right now there is no pedestrian or bike facility along that section of the road. You can see in the bottom right, that's a picture of, from that plan on one of the possibilities to, to do that. The, the slope on the side of the road there is pretty steep. So one of the options that that plan looked at was moving the sidewalk and pathway into one of the travel lanes and then having a shared bike lane in the other vehicle travel lanes. I'll just mention that in the 2012 Stormwater Master Plan, there was a project that kind of combined that concept with improving stormwater quality in Charbonneau by that barrier between the travel lane and the bike lane and the pathway being a water quality swell. Ultimately, that project was removed from the master plan because it was just so expensive at 4.6 million at that timeframe. I'll just touch on the, the Charbonneau Consolidated Improvement Plan, which we completed in 2014, was really the first plan that did a comprehensive inventory of that existing pathway, the condition, all of the safety issues that existed with that. That plan recommended a short-term improvement project to correct all those safety issues. So corrected trip hazards and the drainage that was being caused by tree roots uplifting the asphalt. And then also acknowledged that there's, there's a need to do a long-term replacement of that pathway because it is in such deteriorating condition at being 50 years old. And then we, we did three different alternatives with three different cost estimates. One, just replacing the pathway in kind with concrete sidewalk, upgrading to meet ADA. Another, what was the minimum work that could be done to move that bike and pedestrian facilities into the outside travel lanes of French Prairie Road? And then another one, looking, going back to that stormwater master plan project and looking at adding that rain garden between as a separator. And those cost range at that time were between $600,000 for just in kind replacement, up to 5.7 million for the stormwater facility. And then the last work that was really done that looked at this project was in 2020 when we were looking at doing a parks bond to fund a lot of the parks projects. The Parks Bond Task Force that was created to recommend projects ended up recommending a project to replace the, the existing pathway and to also extend it and fill in that missing gap. And the cost estimates were updated at that time, $1.5 million for the replacement and $2.5 million to extend it. In addition to a lot of the planning work that has been done since the, one thing, one thing I wanted to mention is, why does the city own a sidewalk? And, because that's not typical for a city. And in 1998, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Charbonneau Country Club. In it, so in addition to taking over a lot of the utilities and roadways that were once private in Charbonneau, the city also agreed to take over this maintenance responsibility for this pathway. So that's why it's in our inventory and why it's the city's responsibility to maintain this pathway. But since, since we took it over and since that Charbonneau Consolidated Improvement Plan was completed, we have been doing maintenance projects on this project about every four years, as you can see from the schedule. In 2016, that's when the city did that short-term replacement or repair program that was recommended by the Charbonneau Consolidated Improvement Plan. We ended up doing about 830 feet of pathway improvements. We improved five curb ramps at about $140,000. You can see those pictures are before and after, just an example of the types of repair that were done. 2020, we got, received more complaints from Charbonneau community members. And as part of our utility replacement project in Charbonneau, we added some more repair and replacement of that pathway in that, in that project. So another 540 feet of replacement at a cost of about $100,000. Public Works Department just finished an inventory of the, of the pathway again and another repair is needed. And the cost estimate is about $50,000 for that work. As you can see from these photographs, these are just Band-Aid projects. They're not addressing the long-term need to either replace that path or move it into the roadway, into one of those travel lanes. So some of the issues that we're facing with what do we do long-term with the pathway is we have these continued repair and maintenance needs. Like I said, about every four years, we're having to do a pretty big repair and replacement project because of those tree roots pushing up the asphalt and creating trip hazards, creating those drainage problems like you saw in that one picture. Also because the asphalt is, surface is so old that it's starting to unravel, so there's a lot of loose rock from the, from the asphalt that is so old that makes it, you know, can be slippery conditions. So we're facing that continued maintenance need that's going to continue to, you know, as that sidewalk gets older, it's going to need more and more repair and maintenance. Also, you know, it's, like I said, it's 2.2 miles of, of pathway that's needed. So that's a high project cost to do anything. It's going to cost a lot of money. And there's not a lot of funding available. This project's only about a quarter attributed to growth, so only about a quarter of the project can be funded through system development charges. The other funding sources like gas tax or vehicle registration fee, we just don't collect that much money to do a big project that would be needed here. And then you saw all of those other, those planning documents have been done. There's a lot of ideas, there's a lot of different ways to tackle this issue. None of them have been identified. What is the preferred? There hasn't been a lot of outreach done with the Charbonneau community in the last 14 years on this issue. So not real clear direction on how to move forward. So our recommendation is to put a project into the next year's CIP to do some alternative analysis, work with the Charbonneau community to identify the preferred solution and then develop a concept design and construction cost estimate based off of that. And that will give us a good starting point on how to move forward, how to develop a funding plan to, to implement that preferred design. So that's a hopefully quick summary of, of the existing pathway and what we're trying to do, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Sorry about my voice. I'm struggling tonight. So my concern about the project is, well, I guess first of all, there's a question about, in the '24 budget, is there still anticipated that $50,000 will be spent to do some repairs during, before the end of the year?
Delora Kerber, the Public Works Director is here to, and she, I think she can answer that, that question. That's not a capital project, it would be under the Road Operating Fund.
Hi, good evening, Delora Kerber, Public Works Director. We actually don't have the $50,000 currently allocated in the operating budget to be able to do the repair. Likely we would look for a budget amendment.
Okay. So my concern is safety and how tolerant we would be as a city if our citizens, if we were, they were told, you have a safety issue with the sidewalk in front of your house because of roots and whatever else. And they said, we can't do it because we don't have any money. And I know that we would help them if we could out of the sidewalk fund, repair fund, but we would have the expectation that that repair would be done. And I'm also concerned certainly about safety. We've had, I have had reports of people who have fallen and had injuries as a result of the, of the condition of the, the walkway. And the, the timeline concerns me a little bit because it, while it puts, I think, an emphasis on, in the right place in terms of getting the feedback, getting a preferred design, really understanding what the costs are, it still doesn't necessarily find the money. But it then puts repairs maybe off until fiscal year '26, which, which I'm concerned about in terms of safety. And one of the, one of the issues that maybe people don't understand, and I think it was in your report, is that there are roughly, I would say, there are no sidewalks in Charbonneau generally. I have a, I have a thought about what Willamette Factors was thinking in 1978 or '76 when they started and they put all of these continuous cart paths on the golf course, thinking, oh, that's a great deal, we don't need sidewalks. All these people can walk on the golf course, which is not allowed. It's private property and it's also very dangerous. And that is posted on every entrance now. So people walk in the street and they walk on French Prairie. And I have pictures of people, what looks like a family with a stroller, walking down French Prairie in one of those lanes. Really unsafe. So I'm, I think, I think I'm trying to figure out what's the good balance there because I do know that there is not a single thought of what the correct answer is. And people I've talked to have said, that'd be great, take those two outside lanes. And now that they've seen what has been done on Town Center Loop, that works to just have one lane. And that, that may be an option. I can't speak for the Charbonneau Country Club, but my guess is they would help defer some of the cost of actually reaching out to the residents in Charbonneau to know, to help with finding out whether a single lane in either direction at least is palatable without coming up with a design that they would have to respond to. But that would take Public Works working with the country club to do that. But if that could be done and it somehow expedites the project, I'm concerned about repairs starting in '26 and without any hope that we have any money anyway. I think the city has an obligation and responsibility and so what do we do? We have also a liability, I think.
Thank you. So given that it's seven o'clock, I know other counselors may also have things to say, I, I would like to be able to summarize this and ask you to think about longer answers that you could email so that we have those. Let's just take a few more minutes for other comments. I definitely appreciate the, the need and the pages and pages of prior studies and, and different, you know, if you walk out there, which I've done as well, it is a long way. And there are big trees up on banks, it's very complicated. So it's not something that we can just start next week and get it finished up by the end of May. So could my, you know, this is a work session, we're not voting on things. I also would like to hear back on the, the most expedited way that we can begin that conversation with Charbonneau so that we can come back and then look at financing options and look at what's realistic. Any other comments? Just that I echo Counselor Linville. Okay?
So I'm just, I mean, safety is a big issue and liability. And, you know, like the scope could probably, we can look at the options, but just off the top of my head, having a single lane for the pedestrians and bicycles instead of having one going in each direction would really cut down the cost, but I'd really like to see some options and get things going too. I'm really worried that we're going to get sued.
All right. Do you have enough information?
Yeah, I think we have enough.
For a work session, we're not making decisions tonight?
Yeah. I, I think we have enough information to, to develop a strategy.
And I would like to thank Ann Chevlin, the president of the Charbonneau Home and Owners Association, Charbonneau Country Club for being here tonight, and also Jim Mariotti, who's executive director there, for being here tonight. And so what is our next, what is your next step, Zach?
I think the next step, you know, any, any work that we do on assessing those, you know, what can be done about moving a pathway into the lane, we're going to have to have a consultant on board to help us with that information.
I think, I think it needs to be a priority in next year's budget.
Well, we need to, yeah. And I, I didn't mean deciding on what you're doing. I meant about going away from this meeting.
I, I think the takeaway is, is that we put that in the budget and it comes to council and the budget committee so that we have that $250,000 so that we can start having this conversation out in Charbonneau. Because my concern is we're dumping a lot of money into maintenance.
Right.
And that's just throwaway money.
I think we all agree on that.
So we really need to have some options for council to consider. And then we can look at the funding, and then we can make those decisions as to, okay, which emergency repairs? And how long is it going to take to get the ultimate solution?
And so the other part of that that we'd like to hear back on is the idea of how and when to start the, you know, information gathering, the opinion gathering.
I think some of this presentation, I think you and Zach are going to be presenting to Charbonneau in, is that April?
Right.
So he can do basically the same presentation, and we can start that conversation now. And we have two folks from Charbonneau here tonight. They can report back to their constituencies that council had this conversation, and it's moving forward.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that concludes our work session. And we will, I'm looking at our technical side here. Do we need to break for the next meeting? So we will just, our next step is to have an urban renewal meeting. So I'm going to adjourn the work session. I'm going to convene a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Will the recorder please call the rule?
Member Berry.
Present.
Member Linville.
Here.
Member Ocreval.
Here.
Member Dunwell.
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
And that? Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to citizen input. As you see on the screen, do we have anyone willing, needing to input? So I will not read that message. And that brings us to the consent agenda. Will the agency attorney please read it by title?
URA Resolution Number 340, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Wilsonville, authorizing the assignment of the facility's lease with Wilsonville Community Sharing and minutes of the January 18, 2024 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to our public hearing. We have URA Resolution Number 349. Will the agency attorney please read it?
URA Resolution Number 349, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency, authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2023-24.
Thank you. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider URA Resolution 349. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. For those in the audience, please fill out a speaker card and provide it to the city recorder. For those on Zoom, if you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use raise hand feature on Zoom or press *9 on your telephone to notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter webinar number 815-36056468. Both numbers are now shown on the screen. When you begin your testimony, please state your name and address for the record, or you may state that your address is as provided to staff. After each person testifies, members may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified to staff or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the agency has heard from everyone and the agency is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Agency deliberates, and I will announce a result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has previously been said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is a one minute remaining. The public testimony is now open. We will now hear the staff presentation.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's Assistant Finance Director. Before you this evening is a budget supplemental. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Wilsonville Spokesman on February 22. The total budget supplemental is for $3.7 million, as detailed in your packet. This is predominantly for the rollover of unspent budget authority from fiscal year 2223 for capital project funds for the Beckman Det Bridge and to recognize the Wilsonville Investment Now Win Program reimbursement. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you. If any questions, we do have staff here that can answer.
Or agency members, any questions? Okay. Do we have anyone wishing to provide public testimony in any format? Do any of the council members wish to testify in this proposal?
No.
Okay. And does any member need anything clarified regarding the testimony we've heard? I know I've asked you that before. And I'm going to ask again, anyone on Zoom yet? They still have not notified us that anyone has any comment. Does staff have anything further to add to the record at this time? Or does the agency have any additional questions for staff? Seeing no further testimony and no issues that warrant continuing the public hearing, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 7:10 p.m. It is now time for the agency to consider URA Resolution 349. May I have a motion on the resolution?
I move to approve URA Resolution Number 349.
Do I have a second on that motion?
A second.
It has been moved by Member Ocreval and seconded by Member Dunwell that we approve Resolution 349. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Okay. Have some competition with the iPad there. The motion passes 5-0. That is the end of our, I will now adjourn our urban renewal meeting. Are we ready to go right into the city council meeting? No one needs a break? Okay. Called to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council at 7:12 p.m. Will you please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance?
Roll call first.
Excuse me? Yep, I do want to do roll call. Will the city recorder please call the rule?
Councillor Berry.
Present.
Councillor Linville.
Here.
Councillor President Ocreval.
Here.
Councillor Dunwell.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. I'm going to start with some mayor's business and just briefly let everybody know that we have another Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee Speaker event coming up on Wednesday, March 6, at 6 p.m. And this is advertised on our website, city website, and also various places around town. And I encourage you to look that up. Briefly, this particular presentation is given by Erica Pham, who is currently the Chair of the City's DEI Committee. And they will be discussing how gender and sexual orientation are concepts that have varied meanings across time and culture and in ways that are evolving rapidly today. And Ms. Pham is going to explain the meaning of these concepts and the importance of being open-minded and seeking understanding of the LGBT QIA-plus community in learning and in learning how to be an ally. So that is happening this Wednesday at 6 p.m. at the Wilsonville campus of Clackamas Community College. I'm going to, you still want me to give that report on the airport?
I think it's probably best.
Okay. We're giving councillor Linville's voice a break. And so she would normally give this report because she, councillor Linville is the council's signed liaison to the Oregon Department of Aviation for the Aurora State Airport PAC meeting. And this is a, it's a meeting, the PAC stands for Planning Advisory Committee for this Aurora State Airport. Their next meeting on Tuesday, March 12. And this is an important meeting. We're waiting for, you know, there's been a lot that has transpired over the years, and they have not met for some time.
That's correct.
And during this period of waiting for this meeting, we understand that the Aviation Department of the State of Oregon has rewritten the draft Airport Master Plan Chapters 1 through 6, I think about six times. And our staff is still studying all of the changes. And I know councillor Linville will as well before that meeting. And we will hear more later after that meeting. Thank you, councillor Linville. We have a lot, we're in the middle of the short session of the legislature. And the City of Wilsonville always has a lot of activity with the legislature in representing the needs of our city and our region and how we can do the best for our city. One of the areas that has taken a lot of time of our staff and also our council in submitting testimony is the Governor's Housing Bill, which is called Senate Bill Number 1537. It has passed through the Oregon Senate, and it now moves to the House of Representatives. I don't know if there was more action this afternoon when I was in meetings. So I might not have the minute-by-minute detail there. I will say that, you know, the purpose of this bill is to advance the development of more affordable housing. And I think you heard our council members express their understanding of the need for more affordable housing in all across Oregon. And that's what this bill is meant to address. At a recent meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, however, which is a group that I go to with about 25-plus cities, there was unanimous concern among those present that this bill is really threatening and preempting local control for cities. And it seems to be creating a lot more state regulations. There does not seem to be sufficient funding to do all of the things that are being asked of cities under the name of creating more affordable housing. So it has a good intention, but we still find it to have difficulties for our city. And we're working with other cities to do our best. And overall, it's really putting a lot of new regulations before cities. One of the features of Senate Bill 1537 is to help cities advance new housing and follow the law using a number of factors. We have asked for money to help cities install infrastructure that they would need in order to build more housing. And we still don't feel satisfied with what kind of tools are going to be available to cities. So we're continuing to watch that and see where it goes. There's a companion bill to advance state funding of affordable housing that is called Senate Bill 1530, which we do support. Senate Bill 1530 appropriates over $250 million for the implementation of various state programs to support affordable housing, including $65 million for emergency shelters, $40 million for eviction prevention programs, and $10 million to acquire land for affordable housing, $18 million for recovery housing projects, $15 million for the Healthy Homes Repair Fund, which helps people stay in their homes, $7.5 million for heat pump and air conditioner installation, which helps make homes livable for people, and $100 million is earmarked for certain cities' projects statewide. I don't believe Wilsonville is included in that $100 million. There's another bill that we have a lot of interest in, that you've heard a lot about, and that is Senate Bill 1572. And that is one that we call the West to Salem Bill. And that would be to extend the West commuter rail for a study on how to extend the West commuter rail from Salem, or excuse me, from Wilsonville to Salem. And that has had a great deal of support with a number of cities up and down I-5. It's had support on both bicameral support. And it's seeking a reduced appropriation of just $250,000 to fund a technical study by ODOT and the work of this Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments to get this underway. We really appreciate Senator Wood's work on this and also Representative Neron and Representative Mannix, who's a chief sponsor. But we were informed last week that the Oregon legislative leadership may not be interested in advancing this study at this time. But we still, we're still working on it with our group of advocates, which includes cities of Aurora, Beaverton, Donald, Hubbard, Kaiser, Salem, Twolleton, Tigard, Woodburne. The Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium has endorsed it. Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Government, Salem Area Mass Transit, SMART, our local transit, Yamhill County Transit, Thousand Friends of Oregon's, Oregon Association of Rail and Transit Advocates, Transit Salem, and the Portland, Western, and BNSF railroads. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to Salem to meet with Mayor Hoy of the City of Salem and work on that further. Lastly, the legislature heard a bill that would reauthorize and fund the Business Oregon Regionally Significant Industrial Sites program. That is really important to Wilsonville. And we have testified in support of this Bill Number 4042, which would reauthorize this program for a six-year program. Basically, it allows some funds for cities like Wilsonville that have industrial lands available for businesses to locate in. But infrastructure is needed to bring them into active use. So we're really working on that bill. I would like to comment on the, one item on our consent agenda regarding affordable housing. And that is that our council, as you can see in the agenda, the detail is that we are scheduled to approve a series of resolutions granting a tax exemption from property taxes for certain affordable housing facilities. There's a great deal of detail on this in our packet. And really, this happens each year. The city council is asked to approve an abatement of property taxes for affordable housing facilities in Wilsonville that support low-income, disabled seniors, and those with behavioral health issues. Some of our affordable housing facilities seek an exemption from property taxes via the Clackamas County Assessor's Office. And this tool allows, in this way, the city and county have been able to abate over $400,000 in property taxes that helped to subsidize 600 housing units at nine facilities in Wilsonville that provide affordable housing. And that's what I was referring to today, that we do have a good head start in Wilsonville for the program or the problem that we've all been discussing. We need to do a lot more. And so with the prospective construction this year, also of the Wilson, a very nice structure at the West Station, the Wilsonville Transit Center Transit Oriented Development Project, we will add another 120 units of affordable housing. So lots more to learn there. Our next council meeting is going to be, is scheduled for Monday, March 18, starting at 7 p.m. We will be, my last point on mayor's business is I would like to complete an appointment of, ask for ratification. My recommendation to appoint Elizabeth Garcia-Davidson to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. If I could have a motion to that effect, councillor President Ocreval.
I move to ratify the appointment of Elizabeth Garcia-Davidson to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning March 4, 2004, to December 31, 2025.
Is there a second?
No.
No.
We need to. 2024. Our paper says 25?
No, you said 2004 to 2025.
Oh, could you restate?
It's a long term.
Let's try this.
The dates, please.
God bless them. Okay, I move to ratify the appointment of Elizabeth Garcia Davidson to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning March 4th, 2024, to December 31st, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I will add that we advertise, there was a comment made about how this process is done at the last meeting, so I think during discussion on this is a good point to bring it up, and how people are renewed. So this is an open position because one of the members of our committee who'd spent a lot of time serving, I think about three years, wrote to us and said that they had family commitments and could not use, could not devote the time to it anymore. So that gave us an opening, and we have a list of people who have applied for these positions in the last, in various openings in the last few months, and I've interviewed them, and I'm glad to be able to recommend Ms. Garcia. And Ms. Garcia Davidson. And she's very enthused about this opportunity. Any other comments? I'd like to ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And also, just to correct something that was mentioned at the community, at the Citizen Input last meeting, I heard something that didn't sound quite right to me, so I looked it up in the record and found that, in, in my experience, and I clarified with the city recorder, most of these positions are, some of the, we have about 70 people on our boards and commissions, 70 different positions that don't include when there's a city councillor as a, as a non-voting member. And there are sometimes staggered terms, so that all the terms don't term out at the same time. But generally, people are able to serve two terms, and when their term is up for renewal, the city recorder sends them an invitation asking if they would like to renew. And in every case that I've been involved in, that person, if they have the time and want to renew, they are asked to renew. And we've, we've really had a lot of success in involving a wide variety of people in our community in these positions, and it's from them that we get the input that we seek. And I think our next round of applications will be coming up soon, will be advertising again. So with that, we will come to our communications segment of the agenda, starting with Clackamas Community College bond with Dr. Tim Cook. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald, councilors. Thank you so much for having me back. It's great to see you. I'm going to talk with you and share with you a little bit tonight about our planned proposal to, to put a bond on the November 2024 ballot. And at some point, I've also got packets for you, so that, so some of this information I'm going to share, you'll, you'll have as a takeaway as well. We're calling this Planting Seeds for Student Success, and that's, there's a couple pieces of that. One is, one of our major projects is around horticulture, which I'll talk about in a little bit. But really, the overall theme, if you think about the proverb, you know, we're going to plant trees that we will never sit under. That's kind of our thought, is that we're looking to, for information for facilities of the college that will be there in 10, 20, 30 years, and probably long after I'm gone and others, others are gone as well. And so that's the, the theme for this, and I'm going to share some of this, and if you have time, I'm going to go as quickly as I can, but if you have any feedback for me at the end, that would be really wonderful. So just as a quick overview, you probably know this, but I think it's, it's good to remind folks, we've been around for almost 60 years. Our 60th birthday is approaching. We have three campuses, our Oregon City Campus, our Wilsonville Campus right next door, that you're all aware of, and our Milwaukee Campus. Just a little over 900 employees at the college. Student population's actually a little bit higher than that. I'll show that on the next slide, but the average age is still about 32. And then over 100 different technical and technical programs we offer in addition to a number of different other programs as well. So there's quite a bit on this slide. This is something we do every year to sort of see how things have changed. I'll point out here where our student population, our head count, so every student that takes a class throughout the year at the college is just about 20,000. We learned this year that actually now we're the second-largest community college in the state, behind Portland Community College. And you'll see on here that almost a third of our students now are known racial minorities. That's grown quite a bit, you know, largely Latinx, Hispanic students, but all of, all of our classes there are growing. And then an interesting number, only 15% of our students are full-time. And that is not necessarily because they want to be part-time, it's because many of our students are parents, or they're working, and they're taking classes when, when they can. It's not the, it's not the, the way we recommend it, because the longer it takes for folks to get through a degree, the, the more challenging it is for them to complete. So we do what we can to help them through that process, but it just is the reality, and it's, that's been trending for years, that more of our students are part-time, and so we look for different supports to make sure that they can stay in school. And then, as I said earlier, average age 32, that gets skewed when you look at students that are going for transfer degrees or full-time credit students, which are largely our younger students, or dual-credit students, high school students, which is about 22% of our entire population now. So quite a few high school students come to the college. Don't need to tell you what a bond election is, other than, community colleges, we're not allowed to do levies like school districts are. We can, the only way that we can pay for buildings or expansions of our grounds is through a, a bond election, unless, of course, somebody decides to donate a lot of money to us. But bonds are the ways that we are able to, to build our buildings, the way we've built all of our buildings thus far. And as I said, we're looking right now at November of 2024, that, the large general election to put this one on the bond. We are fortunate and really thankful for the support that we've received from Clackamas, or Clackamas County over the last 25 years and beyond. Very generous. We believe and we're proud to be really good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so is, we're proposing for this ballot in November 2024, that it's a renewal bond from our, it's the second round from our 2014 bonds. And since 2014, we've had this plan to responsibly ask our voters for support, and are making this as part of an overall plan that has been in place for now for more than a decade as we've, as we plan it. It is, it is a renewal, and it's not expected to raise taxes. Quick reminder, I know I was just here this last year sharing our 2014 bond completion, and that bond was a $90 million bond that the taxpayers approved, and we were able to leverage that bond with another $46.3 million in matching funds or grants, a number of different pieces. The state actually gave us $32 million in state matches. We received some support from TriMet and, and some others for our bus systems, and then a number of different grants, including even some things as, you know, furnishing those buildings, where we were able to get grants for that as well. So we're pretty proud of that. And then also, our board, it's really important that we hire local, small businesses, women-owned and minority businesses, and about 30% of the projects that we completed were done by businesses here in Clackamas County, so we're working to keep that taxpayer dollars in the county as well. So how did we figure out what to, to put forward, or what we're thinking about putting forward? A number of different things that we, we worked on. We had a, we spent the last couple of years working on a concept master plan for all three of our campuses to see about where we need to head. We really looked at the future of higher education and how learning is changing, and online learning and hybrid and the rest. So there, there's a lot that went into our concept master plan. And then all three of our campuses have some sort of use by the community, so we really looked at an athletic facilities plan, and, you know, to see where we can either redo or maybe enhance some of our athletic facilities for, for school districts, for community members, and for the college. And then we looked at a, an extensive mechanical, electrical, and plumbing plan. Many of our buildings are now over 50 years old, or, you know, are aging, and we want to make sure that our, all of our systems are working as well, and so we're being efficient there. Identified about $335 million in projects, and realized pretty quickly that that would not fly anywhere for voters. And so this renewal bond we're anticipating will be about 110, maybe to 120 million dollars, and so we had to narrow those, narrow that down. We did that through an internal bond work group of staff, students, and board members. We did a lot of surveying, and we did some external polling to really get to the point where we're at today. And so where we're at now, as we're, you know, checking and getting this checked out, making sure it resonates with people, we've got three main themes identified. And the first one is we want to make sure that we're preparing students for success in modern learning spaces. So I mentioned earlier, you know, again, that as we think about the future of higher education and learning, we realize that a number of our spaces really need to be updated and ready for the types of technology and types of learning that we need today, and there's, and then there's a couple larger buildings that we're looking at as well, our new educational opportunities we're looking at. Number two, we want to enhance our partner community connections. We're very proud of the community partnerships that we have and the collaboration we do at the college. I say probably every speech I ever give that community is our middle name, literally at the college, and we take it really seriously, and so we want to make sure that we're doing what we can to continue those partnerships. And then lastly, we want to preserve and maintain our assets. So the first one is preparing students for success in modern learning spaces. So on the Oregon City Campus, we have an opportunity to construct a center of excellence for horticulture, farming, welding, and wildland fire. And this is, these programs are all located in some of our oldest buildings on campus, actually, in our oldest building on campus is our horticulture program. And so we've, as we've looked at this and looked in our community here in Clackamas County, there are a number of family farms that are, that are being passed down and not necessarily education for the people that are inheriting these farms. And farming, like many industries, is changing quite dramatically, and it's becoming very high-tech, and there's a real need to make sure there are educational opportunities. And so we see an opportunity to create this center of excellence for the county, if not, and if not the state, to really educate people on how to grow their own food, and, and really make sure that we're creating, again, a, a system that continues on and on for decades. One of the interesting pieces about that is we were approached a little over a year ago by the Clackamas OSU Extension Service Program, and seeing if they could move on to our campus. And initially, they'd asked us if we had any buildings we weren't using, which I kind of laughed and said, no, we're using all of our buildings, but we'd love to, to talk with you about, you know, potentially building something together. And so we've got a memorandum of understanding with them right now that should our bond pass, that they're ready to bring significant dollars and interest and faculty and their, their entire program for Clackamas Extension onto our campus, which is a really nice partnership, because we already do quite a bit with them, but to have them all there, and then the, the kind of the third leg of that stool is really working with our businesses and our nurseries here in Clackamas County to create this center of excellence. So it's kind of an exciting opportunity. Here in Wilsonville, as you know, we have the partnership, you know, we've been in here since 91, and we have the partnership with PGE, which is really, really great, but we see an opportunity to really create a workforce training center here at Wilsonville Campus and expand some of the work we're doing around apprenticeships and training, but really looking more at some of the high-tech needs here in Wilsonville. As you are all growing dramatically here, we want to be in a place too where we're ready to meet that need. And so there's, there's a strong part for the, the Wilsonville Campus here next door as we look at that piece. And then, as I mentioned earlier, you know, there are just a number of different needs that we have in some of our older buildings to really rethink those spaces. We don't need really large lecture halls anymore. We need flexible spaces where students can get on a hybrid class, get in an online class, do a face-to-face class, and kind of all the different ways that they are learning nowadays. And that's requiring some, that will require some remodeling, certainly will require some technology upgrades. I mentioned the partner community connections. Another kind of interesting opportunity we have is around STEM. There's a national nonprofit called the Challenger Center, and if you remember, many of you remember the 1986 Space Shuttle Challenger that exploded. There is, this group actually sets up simulations, and if you see that, you look at the picture that's on the far right here, you'll see some students that are, that are going through this, and they, they have several besides just the, the Space Shuttle Challenger one. They have several different simulations they can run either K through 12 students through, or college students, or even businesses that want to do some leadership training or, or professional development. And it's, it's what it sounds like. You'd come in and some, some people would be at the, the station where they're, the control station where they're directing the piece, some would be actually on the shuttle doing all that, and there's this whole, like, several hour-long simulation project. We've gotten, there's some interest in our, from our faculty and from our school districts, so we've asked all of them about this, and then we, we're also trying to get some federal dollars from our federal delegation for, for this project as well. And then, as I mentioned, we're looking at this, you know, workforce partnership building on, on our Wilsonville Campus, and then on our Oregon City Campus primarily, but we're also looking at Wilsonville and at our Milwaukee Campus to see where we can do some more work around spaces, community spaces that people can come and use, whether it's for, you know, athletics or just for their own recreation. Lots of people like to come and walk on our campuses, and, you know, they're nice places for people to, to come and feel like it's theirs, so we, we want to do more of that. We have a walking trail at the Oregon City Campus that's, there's sections of that we really need to finish to make it safe. Listening to your conversation, your work session about, you know, sidewalks and the rest there, we have spaces like that too, that are not quite safe, that we need to, to And then lastly, maybe not the most exciting, but certainly really important, we really need to upgrade our technology and our computer labs. We need to improve our safety and security overall at the college. Some of our systems, I, this, this picture on the left with the, our big plant, physical plant, that, that looks really nice. They keep it really clean and painted, but it's horribly inefficient to, to heat and cool our, our buildings. And so there's some opportunities that we have to really become more energy efficient and actually save quite a bit of money by, by, you know, looking at some of these facilities and changing those out. And I will just say, you may have heard, we had a significant cyber attack last month that really caused a number of challenges for the college, and we responded really well to that, and it, it could have been much worse than it was. But as we think ahead to not just the security on the campus, but security overall of our systems, this is becoming more and more important as we look at, at IT as well. As I mentioned, you know, we were successful in the 2014 bond to get almost 50% matching funds. We are, that is our goal again, is to get as many matching funds as we can, so if it's 110, you know, we'd love to get that to 150, 160 million dollars if we're successful. So as, as I said, Oregon State University would be bringing forward quite a bit of matching funds. State of Oregon still has the match for $8 million per building that we end up doing. We, we are talking to our federal delegation about, you know, federal support there, and then we pursue a number of other grants constantly to, to look at this as well, so that'll be a big goal for us as we look, look at this further. So as I mentioned, it's estimated to maintain the current tax rate. It's a renewal bond. It's currently 25 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. That will be the same that we're moving forward on, so it, it's not expected to increase taxes. If you're interested, I did get all the average assessed home values for all of our areas here in Clackamas County. For Wilsonville, the number I have is $521,834 for the average assessed home value, which is at 25 cents per thousand, is $130.25, what does that cost yearly? And that's it. We have a website, ccbond.org, that has this information a little bit more, as, I also gave you those packets. The seeds on those are raised and cultivated by our students from our horticulture program. So if you, if you do like to plant things, and if you want others, we've got, I've got other, other kinds of plants, but I wanted you to have that and then the one-pager. And then there's a pack, or a brochure in there. We did an economics study on the ROI of the college last year, and so there's quite a bit of information in there about how much we contribute to the local economy here, and the, there's this question nationally about, you know, is college really worth it? And I, I think it answers that really well for students and for society, and there are too, about, you know, for every dollar that a student spends there over their life, they get $4.20 back. So there, there's a number of data points in there too, that, that really, I think, hit home the, the value of Clackamas Community College. So I don't know how much, how much time you have, but if you have any feedback, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilors, would you like to make any comments?
No.
I think we caught up a little bit.
If I could, if I could.
Please do.
Thank you, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, for coming. It's always good to see you.
It's good to see you as well.
And congratulations on presenting a bond that isn't going to raise taxes. Makes it a little easier to pass. I'm certainly interested in the Wilsonville Campus as well as your other campuses, but I'm wondering in this new partnership building, one of the, I know that we have at the high school, a fairly robust dual enrollment program. And one of the things that I have heard and been interested in is the ability of those students who start in their dual enrollment program to be able to complete their transfer degree or an associate of applied science degree without having to leave the community. And so that means either computer lab facilities for them to do online classes or for face-to-face classes in some of those 200 level or degree completion courses. Is there a plan for that as well, to be able to say, we are offering degree completion in these areas at the Wilsonville Campus?
Yes. So we, we did something similar in our Milwaukee Campus a few years back where we wanted to ensure that students could complete an entire associate's degree at the Milwaukee Campus. We have a similar interest in doing that in Wilsonville. Western Wilsonville School District is a fantastic partner, and we do quite a bit of, of collaboration with them and making sure that we've got the other in line. What we need to do with the campus as far as our career and technical program is really identify some programs that meet the needs here in Wilsonville. Because we have, we have a number of general classes. We, we do need, and part of what we would need to do is create some more labs here. We don't, we don't have labs, and I know in talking to Oregon Tech, they have a similar situation. The ideal that we're looking at is that we create a pathway from Wilsonville High School through Clackamas to Oregon Tech and/or, you know, where else they want to go. And so those conversations we're all talking about. And actually, without getting too clever, it would be those, those, these three entities plus some business partners where we're really connecting with some internships and the rest. So that partnership building, you know, we're looking at whether it's cybersecurity or, you know, computer science or engineering or some, some other pieces of that.
Or health-related programs.
Correct. Yeah, that's what we're trying to, trying to identify is what the, you know, what the need really is. And so if we're successful in this, that will be, you know, we'll plunge head for, you know, head, headfirst into that. If we're not successful, which I don't even like to say that out loud, but if for some reason we're not successful, I mean, that's still a goal of ours, you know, as we talk and really try to figure out those pieces. It'll just be more challenging without the, the resources.
Yeah. We'd love to keep our students here, and housing is always an issue, so if they can stay at home.
Absolutely.
And complete their degrees, that'll help Oregon Tech and help Clackamas Community College and help our students.
I agree completely. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I would add that I appreciated hearing your talk at the State of the College a couple of weeks ago and also hearing other people comment at that meeting. And, you know, it's so important, I'm really glad to hear about the added focus on maintaining our agricultural economy in Clackamas County and in Oregon. I think I read it might be 25% of the state economic output. Is that right?
I don't know if that's, I mean, I don't know that data point exactly, but it's, it's significant.
It's a significant part of our economy. And then also the childcare. I had the opportunity, you know, the importance that you said at that meeting also of having a place for students to be able to have a drop-in childcare during the day, which you identified was a big need, so that they could take classes. We need to make it possible for our young parents to be able to pursue these degrees that they want. And, and we all know it's, it's very expensive and challenging, and, and our council works on childcare in other, in other capacities. But what you've got built in at Clackamas County really helps, and then they will be able to not only fill the jobs that we need, but also to keep their children learning and thriving in a way they can afford. And then the last point I just wanted to reiterate is, I think, you probably know this, but we hear from our employers in Wilsonville that when we meet with them, which I, we've done quite a bit this year, going out and meeting with some of the businesses, including high-tech businesses, they are looking for STEM-oriented students. They are looking for young people who are interested in math and science and enthused about that, and there are some fantastic jobs here. So I'm really enthused that Clackamas Community College is continuing to excel in that area. So thank you.
And thank you, thank you for attending that State of the College. I did forget to mention that. Appreciate, appreciate that.
Oh, it was good.
And that, yeah, that drop in childcare is a partner, one of our partnerships actually with the YMCA. You know, they've been doing full-day and half-day childcare for us for over a couple decades, but our students, you know, really needed only an hour or two for, for classes or tests or to see an advisor. And so they're providing that entirely free for students, and it's just really wonderful. And so we've been approached here in Wilsonville about starting something similar. And so not unlike, you know, the other piece of that, if, if we have an opportunity to really think about that and do some remodeling or figure that out, because it's, you know, there's, there's a childcare desert throughout this county. There's, there's need all over.
All right. Well, thank you very much for making the trip to Wilsonville, Dr. Cook.
Anytime. I appreciate it.
And let us know if you have any, if you find any ways that we can be of assistance with letters of support for the various grants you want to pursue.
I appreciate that, and there's a good chance we might be back here like later this summer or early fall as we get closer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. So that brings us to our citizen input and community announcements. Do we have anyone wanting to call in Zoom? So therefore, I will not read this paragraph. Moving to counselor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Akervahl.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, actually, yes, I attended one of our, our Wilsonville Childcare Consortium meetings, which was last week. And, and we're looking at trying to, to meet more regularly, perhaps even like every, every other kind of week's schedule, twice a month, to, to keep up on some of the activity that's happening with state legislature. But also, it feels that there's a bit of momentum right now with, with some of our local childcare providers, and so certainly want to capture that. And that's been a positive thing. I also, since our last meeting, as the mayor mentioned previously in tonight's meeting, attended the Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Community Open Conversation. It was facilitated, partnered with Oregon Humanities. It was specifically about housing and belonging, and that was this last Thursday. And was able to interact with, with some of our community members too, and having dialogue about what home means to our community members, what a lack of home means to our community members, and how it's, how it's very connected to, to so many other aspects of life that's required for, for stability and for advancement and, you know, being able to pursue the other opportunities, you know, that, that leads to, you know, fruitful employment and education and, you know, all of, all of these different aspects. So I appreciated being able to be part of that. And wanted to just briefly, quickly mention before, before time runs out, this next, not this Friday, but next Friday, March 15th, I believe, is the due date for our photo contest, our city photo, community photo contest that's been running. And there's information on the city website for that. Those photos are involved, are used in a number of different ways. In our annual report that the city puts together, in this last year, we had a calendar, which was a fun item and way to kind of share about the essence of Wilsonville, the essence of our city with other community leaders from different cities and, you know, in different venues. From and through the eyes of the lens, literally the lens, of our community members. I think it's a special tradition now that, that has been going. And it's used for the budget document. I see Keith back there, yes, which we will, yeah, the budget document. But, and it's, although our budget document is lovely in many ways, it certainly is a highlight of that document, is getting to see this reflection of all of the, just the, the aspects, the tangible things that, that make our city really a special place, and the people that make our city a really special place. So next Friday, March 15th, is the deadline for that, and it's very easy to submit a photo.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Linville, still having some voice?
I have a little bit of voice. I just have two calendar items. This Wednesday, I will attend the State Opioid Settlement Board Meeting. And for that's the monthly meeting for the month of March. And then, as the mayor mentioned, I will attend the Planning Advisory Committee meeting on the evening of the 12th. And those are my two meetings planned between now and the next meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Berry.
Thank you. So last week, on Tuesday, February 27th, I attended the Community Enhancement Committee. And it was a really good meeting. We discussed our budget, the current project updates, and then we heard from six different applicants on a variety of proposals that are asking for funding. And so we decided to meet again on March 19th to further discuss the merits of each project and the award money. Then, let's see, the other, and then the next day, on Wednesday, February 28th, I attended the Tourism Promotion Committee. And we listened to two different consultants discuss, you know, their, their part. And so the first one gave their annual report on the ongoing website, including the Explorer Wilsonville, and, which is such an awesome website. I recommend everybody take a look at it. It just has so many good things about what you can do within and around Wilsonville. We also discussed the social media management and geolocation data analysis. And then we have a new consultant called Whereabouts, who presented his strategic plan for the committee. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dunwell.
Mayor, I have no updates.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And that brings us to our new business, Resolution Number 3112, if the city attorney...
Mayor, I think you want to go over the consent agenda?
Oh, I just totally skipped that. Thank you for the reminder. That's several pages.
This is gonna, this is gonna take a minute.
Could you, could the city attorney please start by reading the consent agenda, which is going to take a little while?
Resolution Number 3106, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement on Broadband Services and Infrastructure Sharing between the City of Wilsonville and the City of Sherwood. Resolution Number 3115, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Autumn Park Apartments, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution Number 3116, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Charleston Apartments, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution Number 3117, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from the, from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Creekside Woods LP, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution Number 3118, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Rain Garden Limited Partnership, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Corita's Community Housing Corporation. Resolution Number 3119, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Weideman Park, a low-income apartment development and owned and operated by Accessible Living, Inc. Resolution Number 3127, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to accept assignment of an amendment, the, and amend the facility's lease with the Wilsonville community sharing. Resolution Number 3128, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville supporting a 2024 grant application to the Oregon State Parks Local Government Grant Program for the Memorial Park Playground Replacement Project and minutes of the February 22, 2024 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move that we pass, oh dear, I move that we pass the consent agenda as read. Is that right?
Say approve.
Approved. I move that we approve it as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
All second.
Motion's been moved by Counselor Berry and seconded by Council President Akervahl to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to new business, Resolution 3112. Could the city attorney please read that?
Resolution Number 3112, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing a preliminary engineering report to consider possible formation of a local improvement district for public improvements to Southwest Parkway Avenue and Southwest Printer Parkway.
Thank you. And we will have you giving our staff report, moving to a different chair.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Amanda Guile Hinman, City Attorney. And tonight, I'm here to do a presentation on Resolution Number 3112 for council consideration regarding a preliminary engineering report for a local improvement district. So the agenda for my presentation tonight is just to give a little bit of background regarding the, the general area that we're discussing for a possible local improvement district. I'll then do an overview of a local improvement district. It is in the staff report, but also just for community education. And then the staff recommendation for this preliminary engineering report, and then potential next steps, assuming, if, if council so desires to move forward with the preliminary engineering report. So by way of background, the area that we're talking about for a potential local improvement district for Southwest Parkway Avenue and Southwest Printer Parkway is generally the former Tektronix Industrial Campus. Over the years, back, dating back to the 1980s, it's been partitioned over time where different parts of the campus has been sold off to different developments. In particular, Xerox took over ownership of a majority of the area and has since partitioned off its interest to the applicant or developer known as SKB Park Works. So if you're familiar with the Park Works site, that's the SKB Park Works site that's adjacent to Southwest Parkway. SKB Park Works currently has a development application with the city before the Development Review Board, and they're seeking an additional partition along Southwest Parkway. So I'm going to go over some of the partitions over time just to give a little bit perspective of what we're talking about here. So this first slide is from 1974. This is the largest part, this is the largest concept of the Tektronix campus. At the very top is the Weideman, is Weideman Road, if you're familiar with it. It's no longer designated, identified in our transportation system plan, but at the time, it did exist. And then to the west is Southwest Parkway Avenue. It was a county road at that time. At the bottom is where Beckman Road is. And along the east side is where the eventual Canyon Creek Road will get built, constructed, but again, at this, in 1974, that's not what was present at the time. There's a lot of words on this, but the main thing to take away from, from this slide is a partition that occurred in 2015. All the area, this sort of kind of squiggly line to the, on the south side of the property is where Xerox Drive is, and that's a private access drive. What this, what this partition did is you can see there's sort of, where it says Parcel 2 in the lower right-hand corner, that's where Xerox currently is located. And Parcel 1, which is the remaining, remainder of the, of the And Parcel 1, which is the remaining remainder of the property, is what SKB took over ownership of in 20, around 2015, 2016. Then in 2018, SKB came back to the city and took, asked for an additional partition of the northern part of that area. So if you're familiar with what's generally referred to as like the ESS site, that's Parcel 4 that you're seeing on this partition. So the property that we're currently talking about now is the property that's outlined in blue. That is the area that's still currently owned by SKB from that larger, when we started, from that larger Techtronics Industrial Campus. So what SKB is proposing to do as part of its partition, you'll see this is a preliminary plat that they are proposing where they will, where Parcel 5 is identified right next to Parkway. That's the new parcel that they're looking to portion off from that larger site that I just showed you and that was outlined in blue. So as you can see, that Parcel 5 is relatively small compared to the remaining area of Parcel 6 that exists currently. So what we're debate, what we're discussing as part of this overall project where Parcel 5 may get partitioned and then a development may occur on that site, is that Parkway Avenue to the west and then Printer Parkway to the north of that Parcel 5 need to be developed. They're, right now Parkway in that area is developed to county, a county road standard. It's designated as a minor arterial in our transportation system plan. And Printer Parkway is currently a public access drive, but it is designated as a collector street in our transportation system plan. So both of these, neither of these are developed to our current city standards and need to be redeveloped. But the conversation that we've been having, both as staff and with the applicant, is that the parcel that they're looking to partition and develop is relatively small compared to the street improvements that are necessary to bring these adjacent public improvements up to, up to city standards. So what the city staff have been examining as a possible method for constructing and financing these public improvements for Southwest Parkway and Southwest Printer Parkway is looking at a local improvement district. A local improvement district is not new to the city. We've done several of them in the past. It's just been a while since we've done them. As far as my research shows, the last one we did was back in 2005. But they were pretty regularly used in the 1990s as a way of funding public infrastructure, particularly infrastructure like this. Actually Canyon Creek Road, that's on the other side of this area, was constructed using a local improvement district. So not uncommon to use, just not something that's, that's, that we regularly use, we've used within probably about the last 20 years. So what is a local improvement district? A local improvement district is where the city designates specific properties that are going to be encumbered by a lien on their property. And that lien is for them to then pay, make payments, either a one-time payment or, as you typically see, payments over time to pay for the public improvements that are needed for those sites. So a lot of times where you see them is maybe a group of residents get together and they want to see a sidewalk built outside, next to their property. And they might ask for a local improvement district where their properties are assessed, their lien is put on their properties and they're assessed a dollar amount to have that sidewalk built by the city. But this is much bigger than just a sidewalk. This is a pretty significant, pretty significant improvements that we're talking about. So the local improvement district is generally for the benefit of those specific properties that are being encumbered by that lien and, and being charged that assessment. It's a great financing tool because it's a way for the city to not only collect assessment from these properties, but because we have this security interest in the form of a lien on these properties, we have the ability to go get some alternative financing. In other words, we don't have to rely on the general fund to sort of fill in the gap until we go, until we get the assessed, the assessments back from those properties. We could go out and get financing either through loans or bonds. So how a local improvement district is created is it starts with a formation resolution, a resolution of intent by the city council. That is accompanied with an engineer's report and a financial report. What those, what the engineer's report does is it basically designates, these are the properties that are going to be encumbered. These are the projects that we're going to do and the estimated cost of those projects. And then the financial report goes over how the assessment is going to be allocated out. And we'll get into a little bit of what those assessments look like. There's also noticing and public hearing requirements for that resolution. So to be clear, the resolution that you all are considering tonight is not that. It's not that initiation resolution. This is to start the process of looking at what are the properties we want to, we are thinking we need to include? What are the projects and the scope of the projects? And what are we talking about from a dollar figure? So this is kind of the preliminary step before we get to a potential initiation or formation resolution. So assuming that a formation resolution is adopted, the next step is to do the assessment. So that's where the lien gets put on the properties. It's recorded either in the city lien docket or the county, with the county recorder's office. And then the financing, and that's where the city goes out and determines, you know, what's the best avenue for getting some financing to pay for the design and construction of the project. So as I mentioned, staff is recommending doing the preliminary engineering report. And as I mentioned, first and foremost is to determine properties to include. While we are talking about the specific SKB Park Works site, we do see opportunities for additional properties to be included to the north along Parkway. Parkway needs to be redeveloped further as you go north kind of towards Target and Costco and kind of around that bend is around Cisco. And so because we don't necessarily have to tie this to this one development that's currently going through a land use application process, we have the opportunity of looking to see if there's benefit to including additional properties. So those discussions are currently ongoing with those property, with those property owners. The second thing that I'll do is look at cost estimate for street improvements. One of the things that we need to determine is, you know, does the city have capacity to do just the frontage along Parkway where SKB is? Or can we look at doing something, you know, a larger project that's moving up north along Parkway? So we need to understand the cost estimates and the implications for that from a budgeting perspective. And then the third thing that we'll be looking at are possible calculation methods. There's typically, you see three different types of calculation methods in local improvement districts. The most common for street improvements is called a front footage method. And that's where you look at the frontage of all the properties that are implicated or benefited by these improvements. And you allocate based on their linear feet of their frontage. So that's pretty common. The zone method is generally where you're going, if you're going to include properties that maybe aren't adjacent to the improvement, maybe they're a little off-site, and you create zones based on how much a property benefits from that improvement. So by way of example, not saying that this is where we're going, but if Xerox want, you know, if they're, because we're talking about Printer Parkway, which implicates Xerox, Xerox might be included, but Xerox isn't directly next to Parkway. So there might be a reason to do a zone method or look at a zone method if, if Xerox is included, just because of its adjacency. Finally, the area method is looking at square footage of the property. So you look at the district as a whole and you apply a percentage based on the square footage of the property. Typically, you see that more in like stormwater or sanitary sewer projects. You don't see that as much with street projects. So I don't anticipate that that would be a method that we would use here, but that is a common method that you do see in some local improvement districts. There are way, there are ways to do calculations, to do different ones in different scenarios. So you can do more than one. It makes it a little bit trickier, definitely, but there are ways to do that, which a financial report would outline all of that for the local improvement district. And then finally, the preliminary engineering report would look at the general feasibility. Is the local improvement, you know, we anticipate, staff anticipates the local improvement district is, you know, a good alternative path for the needed improvements here. But, you know, we want confirmation based on looking at the properties, the cost, and the general sort of layout of what the local improvement district could be. So I'd like to just spend a little bit to talk about why, why we're looking at a local improvement district. So typically, when a developer comes in and there's needed street improvements or any type of public improvements, the city generally requires that the developer do those. And for anything that is what we call oversizing or the part that's not related to the development, is the city will issue system development charge credits. That's typically our process. As I mentioned, the parcel, the potential parcel, that Parcel 5 is relatively small compared to the improvements, the street improvements that are needed in this industrial area. And frankly, there are other properties that likely benefit from, from those improvements. So first and foremost, looking at the local improvement district makes sense, makes sense to at least examine it in this case because we are dealing with an industrial area. There's relatively few properties, so it's easy to identify, it's easier to identify, you know, who's benefiting and how much they're benefiting because we're dealing with maybe three, four properties that we're talking about. The second thing that local improvement districts offer that a lot of other funding sources lack is the potential for full cost recovery. So when you form a local improvement district, you start with an estimated assessment that sets out what we think the assessments will be based on our projected costs of the projects. But there's also a true-up opportunity once the projects are completed where we can get actual full cost recovery of, of our costs. So that's really important because as we've seen, you know, generally, the city under collects on, on projects where we need, where private property owners contribute. And so it's a way to make sure that we're not under collecting and thus we're relying on other city sources for funding. The third benefit, as I mentioned, is that the liens that we're able to put on these properties provide a security interest that makes it desirable for lenders. So rather than just relying on, you know, what's in our general fund to back a loan or, you know, whatever, or our systems development charges or whatever the, that fund, whatever the case may be, by having a lien on, on real property, that creates additional security that is desirable from a lending perspective. So it makes it better for us to get, not only get loans, but get loans at a pretty good interest rate. The fourth benefit is that we do have financing opportunities. As I mentioned, what you typically see with local improvement districts is that the government goes out and gets a loan for those improvements, which means that we don't have to then rely on cash in the bank to fund these loans. So we're not relying on the general fund to pay for these improvements. We can go out for loans potentially. And then the final thing I'll just add is that this is on the city's timeline. So when you form a local improvement district, unlike requiring a developer to do it, who has to do it as they're building their development, when you establish a local improvement district, you're doing it on the city's timeline. So let's say worst-case scenario, if the development that we're talking about gets approved, but it never develops, that doesn't prohibit the city from going and doing these improvements, making the assessment and doing the improvements. We can do it before construction starts. We can do it during or after. It's really up to the city to decide what that looks like. The timeline for local improvement districts is pretty long. I think it's like 20 or 30 years that it can exist. So it's a pretty substantial amount of time that, that you can get, get the work done from the city's perspective. So next steps, right now, as is reflected in the council packet, and I will say the draft memorandum of understanding with the applicant has been updated since the council packet. But right now, staff are working on negotiating that memorandum of understanding with the relevant applicant. I am also working with the City of Portland to get assistance from Portland's Local Improvement District Administrator. They do have a person whose sole job is to administer local improvement districts in Portland. And so we are working with Portland to get that person under contract to help provide support for the city. He's indicated that this is a relatively straightforward local improvement district, like I mentioned, because of the few property owners that we're talking about and the pretty clear public improvements that we're talking about doing. So those are the first two steps. We've also actually already started the outreach to other property owners. There is definite interest in a local improvement district being formed in this area by, by those other property owners. Assuming that we, that it's determined that the local improvement district makes sense, we anticipate that a resolution of intent or that formation resolution would come to council probably around fall of 2024, and the assessment would, would occur sometime in 2025. Design and construction, like I said, it's really on the city's timeline. So that's really going to be reflected, figuring out when design and construction of the improvements will start will really depend on the scope of, of the local improvement district. So are we doing full Parkway, full Printer Parkway improvements? Or is it a smaller subset of those two streets? Will probably dictate quite a bit of, of the design and construction just from a staff capacity perspective. As you can imagine, we have a lot of competing projects going on. And then the final step is, is collecting the assessment from, from the property owners once, once we get going on, on the projects. So a lot of information to you all. I'm happy to take some time to answer any questions. And just reiterating again, most of the, most of the kind of meat of the local improvement district, assuming it is moved forward with a recommendation from staff, will come later. This is really sort of that first step of getting to, getting a better understanding of the scope of a local improvement district.
Thank you. So council, press your buttons. If you, go ahead, Councilor Dunwell.
I just have one quick clarifying question. You, you keep speaking about Printer Parkway to the north and the improvements. Is Parkway, Printer Parkway to the south already improved?
So let me just go to this because it probably helps. Sorry, it's so small. Well, actually, maybe I'll go to this one. Okay, so Xerox Drive to the south is a private access road, and that's not designated in the city's TSP for any, to be a public street. Printer Parkway, that kind of does this sort of meandering. Generally, it's all a public access road. None of it is built to city standards. At the intersection with Canyon Creek Road, there have been some improvements to that intersection, but generally speaking, Printer Parkway itself is asphalt. I think it's like 41 feet, you know, two-lane road. If it was a collector street, generally our collector streets have a, you know, bike, sidewalk, bike lane, a travel lane, a median, another travel lane and going the other way. So, yeah. And we anticipate also that the turn lane, that we will need turn lanes, southbound turn lanes, both at Printer Park, or at Printer Parkway and at Xerox Drive, just given the volume of traffic and that there's a lot of truck traffic at those two locations.
Go ahead.
So you said that the city may consider adding more properties to the LID. So I know it's really early in the process, but how far north is the city thinking?
Where we're thinking about potentially going is up through the Cisco site, so.
That's pretty far. Okay.
Yeah.
I think, think, first of all, thank you. This is a really good thorough overview that we got. I think that in our packet, there was some mention about, you know, that, that these LIDs have some administrative costs and some burden in that way. So would you say, it sounds like there, there is a pathway now for supports and getting things established? Is that administrative burden, is it mostly upfront? Or is it ongoing? Or what's the thought? Because I'm also hearing perhaps 25, 30 years. Like, how, how does that work out?
Yeah, I think, I would say that generally speaking, probably it's heaviest at the beginning when you're establishing it and getting all the figures figured out. And then there is an administrative element when you have to do the final assessment. But then, once that final assessment is done, there's not a huge amount of administration going on. It's more just a maintenance thing as long as payments, you know, or regular payments are occurring. And I will say that one of the benefits when I talk about full cost recovery And I will say that one of the benefits when I talk about full cost recovery is that local improvement districts, you can include your administrative costs. Yeah. So there is, so I will say there, I mean, the local improvement district isn't established yet, so we do imagine there is some upfront, you know, some initial upfront costs and we do have, like, we already have budget capacity to absorb those costs right now for like this preliminary engineering report, but the administration costs can be incorporated that are tied to that local improvement district can be incorporated into the local improvement district.
Okay. We wouldn't be setting ourselves up for a trouble spot at the end when it's time to wrap up.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linville.
Thank you for the report. I, I'm wondering if, when the report comes back, the engineering report, I mean, it seems like $10,000 is not a lot of money for an engineering report, but will there be multiple options or will there be a single option?
My guess, so for the preliminary engineering report, I imagine there will probably be two, maybe more options. One, one option I, I imagine has to be just doing the, the improvements that are related to this one property. And then at a minimum, a second one would be taking it all the way to Cisco. There might be iterations in between there. The hard part is, once you start kind of going that way, like going up north, you know, there's, there's no bike lanes, you know, there, it should be concrete paving that whole way. It makes it a little bit hard to say, stop, you know, one property to the north instead of going the whole way. But financially, that may be the scenario that makes most sense. So we will definitely have options with the preliminary one. When you get to the final engineering report, assuming that it comes to the initiation, the formation resolution, that will be one option. It's saying this is the one we're doing. And I, and I will also note that on that, staff anticipates that the engineering report in the financial report will have a larger budget implication than this preliminary one. This preliminary one, like I said, is kind of just at the very, it's at the 30,000 foot view versus getting more into the details of it. So that's why we don't anticipate doing it until next fiscal year.
Yeah, that's what, that was the, the second part of my question was that we would anticipate that the enacting resolution would not come to us until early 2025. Is that correct?
Well, we're anticipating fall of 2024, sometime in the fall, late, probably late fall, fall 2024. I mean, again, this is the first time we've done it in like 20 years. Who knows? Maybe it'll be faster, maybe not. I, yeah, it's hard to anticipate. But one of the things that we also, that I also found in doing the research that's interesting is the same consultant that we used on our last couple local improvement districts is still present and still does this work. So, you know, the resources are out there thankfully to help kind of guide us through
So I, I thought I would just add some comments that, that really are reflected in the packet here, not my, but, but I wanted to confirm that we, we have found that without doing something like this, we have a significant barrier to development.
That's correct.
And those are some very important properties, especially in our region, for many different reasons and being a business friendly community, which has had the great fortune of growing significantly over the last several years. This solution to me looks like another good, I would call it, you know, it, it has several steps to go, but it has the potential to be a really good way to enable our partners and our businesses in the community to get past some hurdles. And as our, our community grow, grew, you know, grows, we, that was, that was kind of a, a street that was built to county standards and now it's in a city. Has to be better. And I really, I think this does look like a good potential solution and that this next step of getting the engineering report is really what we need to validate that and then look at next step. So it's not, that's what I, I, why I am in favor of this. And I also like the, the potential, as you described, that the future administrative costs could be absorbed in the local improvement district. We have experience with it. So I think it fits in with the Wilsonville way of finding a way forward that is beneficial for our community.
And if I could take, segueing from that comment, if I could just take a moment to thank not only our planning staff, but our engineering staff of being very creative and trying to find a workable solution here. We spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings with the applicant's team working through this and it was city staff who proposed this, this option. And it seems like there's a good opportunity here, as you mentioned.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I've, I, I totally can sense that and, and appreciate that really keeping the nose to the grindstone and finding a way forward. And we're at step one, we'll keep working on it. But any other comments? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for the vote. We're ready for the motion. Do I have a motion on Resolution 3112?
Your honor, I move to adopt Resolution number 3112.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been made by Councilor Linville and seconded by Council President Ockervall to adopt Resolution number 3112. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes five to zero. That brings us to our public hearing for Resolution number 3120. The city attorney will read the title.
Resolution number 3120, Resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2023-24.
Thank you. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider on Resolution number 3120. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in our city code. In brief, we will start with the staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who has signed up in advance to testify first in the order, order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. Then I will ask if anyone is on Zoom meeting who has not yet testified but would like to testify to do so. Those in attendance, those in the audience, please fill out a speaker card and provide it to the city recorder. For those on Zoom, if you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your telephone to notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you are having any difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833 and when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When you begin your testimony, please state your name and address for the record, or you may state that your address is provided, is as provided to staff. After each person testifies, counselors may pose to me, may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Counsel deliberates and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open. We'll, we will now begin the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's Assistant Finance Director. Before you this evening is a budget supplemental. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Wilsonville spokesman on February 22nd. The total budget supplemental is for $4.1 million. 1.4 of this is to account for metro grant revenue for the Frog Pond West Neighborhood Park land acquisition. An additional 1.2 is for Beckman Road sanitary improvements with a balance of 1.5 million for new requests as outlined in your council packet. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. Do any of, we have a detailed set of pages and charts in our council packet. Do any of the counselors have questions for our staff at this time? Does anyone, do we have anyone wanting to testify personally or on Zoom phone? Does staff have anything further to add to the record at this time or does city council have any additional questions? If so, nothing to add? With no further testimony forthcoming and no issues that warrant continuing the public hearing and hearing no further questions and everyone who has been made, who, who could having been given the opportunity to testify, I hereby declare the public hearing closed I was, it is now time for the council to consider Resolution number 3120. Is there a motion? Do I have a motion on Resolution 3120?
I move to adopt Resolution number 3120.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
The motion, motion has been moved by Councilor Berry and seconded by Councilor Ockervall. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? The motion passes five to zero. And that brings us to our next hearing, which is ordinance number 889. Would the city attorney please read it?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 889, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville amending the text of the Development Code to make minor modifications to the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District standards.
Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider on first reading, ordinance number 889. This comes to us as a recommendation from our planning commission. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with the staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who has signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask anyone who is on Zoom meeting who has not yet testified but would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, counselors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Counsel deliberates and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, but you want to ensure you have legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with which, with what has previously been said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. Since this is a legal process for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and address for the public record. The public hearing is now open. Please provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and counselors. My name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner. At tonight's meeting, I am presenting for the council's consideration, ordinance number 889, which proposes Development Code amendments to the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District. The purpose of the amendments is to more closely align the standards of section 4.134 of the Development Code with current and future needs of prospective industrial users while not compromising the city's ability to continue creating a connected, high-quality employment center in Coffee Creek. The timeline on this slide summarizes the steps in the Coffee Creek Code assessment. Staff initiated this work in early 2023. On February 14th, 2024, the planning commission unanimously adopted Resolution number LP24-0001, recommending council adoption of the code amendments. The signed resolution is in Exhibit B of Attachment 1 of the council staff report. The Coffee Creek assessment work concludes with tonight's adoption hearing and subsequent integration of the amendments into the Development Code. The Form-based Code standards affected by the proposed code amendments are listed on this slide. Proposed code amendments are included in Exhibit A of Attachment 1 of the council staff report. At the December 18th, 2023 council work session, I discussed the modifications being considered and tonight I'll briefly review them again for council's information. The proposed amendment to the parcel driveway width standard allows two maximums. It keeps the current maximum width of 24 feet for the primary driveway, which provides access for passenger vehicles and light duty trucks, and adds a maximum width of 40 feet for a secondary driveway that provides access for larger delivery vehicles and trucks. This minor modification balances the main goal of limiting pedestrian crossing distance to provide better pedestrian connectivity at the primary driveway with the need for a safe turning radius for larger vehicles at the secondary driveway to prevent traffic slowdowns stacking on the street and damage to curbs and landscape areas from turning vehicles. The proposed amendment to parcel pedestrian access continues to require a minimum of eight feet wide for connections between the primary street frontage and the primary building entrance or entrances. But other pathways into a site may be narrower, provided they meet all other accessibility requirements. This modification acknowledges that it's overly burdensome to require all connections from the street to be eight feet wide and gives highest priority, as intended by the standard, to connecting the primary street frontage to the primary building entrance or entrances. Related to parking on the primary building frontage, the proposed amendment continues to limit, limit the maximum to 16 spaces, but removes the requirement that the spaces be located within one double loaded bay. The amendment also requires 50% of allowed spaces to be designated for short-term visitor and disabled parking, thus allowing other spaces to be utilized for longer duration or by other users such as employees. This modification still meets the intent of minimizing the appearance of parking from an addressing street, thus providing a human scale to the public realm while allowing flexibility in parking configuration and use. The proposed amendment for retaining walls keeps the 48-inch maximum for walls that are visible from adjacent streets, but increases the height to 60 inches when a retaining wall is only visible to users from within a site. The modification emphasizes the intent to minimize site grading to preserve the natural character of a site and integrate retaining walls with other design features while providing some design flexibility by slightly increasing the allowed height of walls that are not visible from the street. Also related to retaining walls, the proposed amendment adds explanatory text to the standard for wall design, stating that walls longer than 50 linear feet must be tiered and that the five-foot minimum horizontal offset is between the lowest part and the upper parts of the wall. Adding this text to the standard for retaining wall design continues to achieve the intent while provided needing, needed clarification for applicants. The proposed amendment to the standard for the required canopy at the primary building entrance increases the allowance to 20%, thus permitting a minimum canopy height of 12 feet while retaining the preferred minimum of 15 feet in the standard. The modification also adds a footnote to Table CC-4 at other standards, such as for ground floor height, to allow corresponding reduction in the minimum height of these aspects of site design when an applicant elects to reduce the quiet, reduce the required canopy height. The modification acknowledges that a canopy height of 10 to 12 feet is the standard storefront dimension, where a height above 12 feet requires a curtain wall system, which may be more expensive and require custom fabrication. In addition, a lower canopy height may allow for better, better weather protection at the primary entrance and can facilitate interior, exterior integration and line of sight. Modifying the allowance provides design flexibility for applicants without changing the preference for a taller canopy height. Relating to building base design, this proposed amendment clarifies that a distinctive appearance of the building base may be achieved using any one of three design options in the standard and does not require both a change in material, texture, color, and finish and a change in surface position. By allowing the applicant to choose any one of the three options, the modification acknowledges that having a base that's both visually and dimensionally distinct can be difficult to achieve, particularly with tilt-up concrete construction. And the same distinctive appearance. And the same distinctive appearance is possible to create and can be equally effective using either design element. At tonight's public hearing, staff is seeking council adoption of Ordinance Number 889, approving the proposed Development Code amendments. Second reading of the ordinance is scheduled for March 18th.
Thank you. So now we're going to ask staff if they have any questions, and I have one to begin with, because this has been a really long process, and it started several years ago when we first, the staff and council first introduced the form-based design. And as I recall, the purpose of that was to make it easier for our business partners in Wilsonville who want to build these kinds of, build industrial and commercial structures to do so with basically less red tape and make it easier. So that was the initial plan. I think it was, can you just give us a little background then? I think it was one of the first ones. We found that it, while it had great intent over the years and councilors that served when I was not on council worked on it, it needed, it didn't hit all the mark, all the marks needed. So can you just give us a little summary, please, how we got here?
Sure. So, so as with any code, when you first write it, you know, you're not sure if it's gonna, if it's gonna work or not, correct? And so this was subject to a pilot program. So, you know, within five years or three development projects, whichever came first, it was to be reevaluated. And what we have found with the four projects that have, have occurred, they all needed waivers, anywhere from like one waiver to seven or more. And so what we wanted to do was determine by talking with the applicants after their project had been completed and their experience, you know, what of those standards could we make minor modifications to to hopefully make it easier for applicants to go, to use the Class II review process, not have to go to Development Review Board, without compromising the ability of the city to still achieve that vision for Coffee Creek? So we've taken a pretty conservative approach here, focusing in on those standards that required waivers and how could, you know, what was the issue with those standards? How could we tweak them to hopefully make it easier for applicants to not have to need waivers for those specific things, but not change them so much that, you know, if there's, let me use an example. For instance, if there's a project that needs a retaining wall that's seven feet tall, they should still have to do a waiver for that. But if there's one that maybe they need, it's only visible from inside, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not that big a wall, that they should be able to, there should be enough room in that standard for them to be able to go through the process without a waiver and still make it a staff decision. And so, so anyway, that's, that's just kind of a background. Yeah, it's, we're, we're looking for balance.
Thank you. Any, any other quest, further questions or?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We've, we've been through this for quite some time, and we've looked at these specific things. This is not the first time we've seen these. My question is, are we still looking at potential modifications in the code? And if so, what would be the, I know with this last time, there was a mandatory review after a certain number of requests. We don't have that any longer. And so are we looking at just an open-ended, we might see code change requests coming through in public hearings? Or are we gonna wait and look again at a number of things and then, and then do a review again?
I think that's probably the more likely scenario, is that we'll see, you know, we'll see how these, with the next, we don't know if there's, we haven't had any applications yet. We haven't had any pre-application meetings for additional development out there. So I think that, you know, we'll, we'll see once we have another two or three projects and see how they do. And if it seems that, oh, they still need waivers, you know, it'll probably be an iterative process where we will reassess again and, and maybe make some more little tweaks to see how it, how it goes.
Oh, I think it's good for the council to at least prepare for that option, that this is not a total fix and that there still may be requests for waivers that would come through in the, in the future. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Council President Ockervall. Thank you. Thanks for the report. And I just wanted to make a, a comment, not so much a question, but a comment, but directly to staff. So I thought probably appropriate at this point versus our council discussion maybe. And a compliment to staff on this, because I think this, from the beginning, doing the form-based code was a new approach. And so, oh, thank you for, for trying something new. Because I think that sometimes you gotta try something new, you know, to, to move in a direction of a vision that's, that's not exactly commonplace. And that's part of what makes us exceptional, right? That's part of what makes Wilsonville feel different, right? Is that sometimes staff is willing to try something new. So thank you for doing that. And I recognize that this, as, as Councilor Linville is discussing this, is an iterative process. And we may be visiting this again. I appreciate the modifications that are being presented in this work, you know, not just tonight, but that we've been seeing coming along. It seems like they are in an effort to not be overly burdensome to applicants, but still encourage high-quality development and, as you said, get at that vision that was the original intent for the Coffee Creek area and give some, some clarity that it turns, turns out through, through our initial experience is needed, both on what the expectations are, but also what the opportunities are. I think we can look at that, both sides of the coin. So thank you, and just a compliment on, on this work.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I will now ask if we have anyone wishing to testify in any of the formats or venues? Okay, the public hearing is now closed at 8:52 PM. And do I have a motion on Ordinance Number 889?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 889 on first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Berry mo, moved, and I think I'm getting tired. And Councilor Ockervall seconded to adopt Ordinance Number 889 on first reading. Is there any discussion?
Just to, for, you know, to ditto what you said, thank you for all the work that, it is a dynamic process, and we're making adjustments as we go and probably we'll make some more adjustments, but good effort.
Thank you. And I appreciate the time that you spent with the development community and asking them for their input and the staff, and so the objective is still to make it easier. It's been hard to make it easier, but we're getting there, I hope. So, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? The motion passes five to zero. Thank you. That brings us to city manager's business.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Legal business.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Opportunity. Our meeting is adjourned 8:54 PM.